This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as in evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for...
Welcome. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the December 10th regular meeting of the Nevada County Board of Supervisors. It's going to be a great day. We have a lot of celebration in front of us, and we're excited about that. Welcome to the board chambers, I've asked. Carol Schofield will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. With that, we'll stand and pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carol. And Madam Clerk, are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to the agenda?
No corrections, Chair.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to our consent calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. The Board of Supervisors walked upon them at one time without discussion. Any board member may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may now raise their concerns to the board members. The supervisors will take these concerns under consideration and decide if there is adequate reason to remove the items from consent. So I'm going to open up the consent calendar items 1 through 34. If any members of the public wish to pull an item, please step up to the podium. Give us your name and your residence, and then we'll go from there. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board and ask, does anybody need to pull something from consent? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the consent calendar items 1 through 34.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes. All right, motion passes. That's a quick dispensation of the consent calendar. We are now going to recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Nevada County Sanitation District 1 Board of Directors. NCSD 1 consent calendar, these items are expected, again, to be routine and non-controversial. The Board of Directors walked upon them at one time without discussion. Any board members may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Members of the public wishing to ask questions or hear discussion on items listed under the consent agenda may now raise their concerns to the board members. The directors will take these concerns under consideration and decide if there is an adequate reason to remove the items from consent. This is Nevada County Sanitation District 1, items 35 and 36. Anybody want to pull that? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period for the consent calendar or bring it back to the board. Anybody need to pull something from NCSD 1? Consent? Nope. All entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent calendar of NCSD 1. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes. Nevada County Sanitation District 1, general public comment. This is the general public comment portion for NCSD 1. Anybody having general public comment on items not included in the agenda for NCSD, please step up. This is for Nevada County Sanitation District, not the Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors' general public comment will be later today, likely around 11:00 to 11:30 a.m. See no public comment here for NCSD. We'll go ahead and close the public comment period and close the public comment period on NCSD 1 and adjourn as the Nevada County Sanitation District 1 reconvene as the Board of Directors, excuse me, as the Board of Supervisors of Nevada County. We have now reconvened. Now we're on to fun stuff. This is item number 37. This is a certificate of recognition for Mike Dent for 30 years of service to Nevada County, including serving as the county's Director of Housing and Child Support Services for the last six years. So we're going to have a good time acknowledging and recognizing Mike for his service. And with that, I'll turn it over to our Chief of Staff, Jeff Thorsby.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, members of the board. Jeff Thorsby, your Chief of Staff. And I am just absolutely privileged today to be here with Mike to really kick off a real recognition for Mike. Quick story is, Mike was one of the first people that I met in the county and actually a part of my interview panel. And throughout the tenure, my tenure, you've really been just an inspiration and leader. So I really appreciate it. But what I'd like to do to really kick things off, I'd like to kick it over to your CEO, Allison Lehman.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, Mike, it's really an honor to thank you for your service to the county and to our community. Your leadership really has left a huge difference and impact. You have transformed the way we've looked at affordable housing. More units were built under your leadership than honestly in the last two decades. And really, I think that's going to be a legacy project for you. For those in the audience, Mike wore two really big hats. Not only was he responsible for housing in our community and all the housing programs, but he also was the Director of Child Support Services. And as director, they continue to be an award-winning, top performer in the state. And I think that's just a reflection of your leadership and just the dynamic team that you have cultivated and supported. Your management expertise has shaped countless initiatives through your 30 years, and you set a standard of excellence that will truly be felt for years to come. So last week, we had our Mike's final executive department head meeting, and Mike left us all with some leadership advice. So I thought it would only be appropriate that I share that today because it really reflects the person that you are. So Mike told us to be a leader, be a leader that isn't afraid to roll up their sleeves and tackle challenges hands-on. Foster collaboration both within your organization and across the community. Stay present and engaged with your team. Leadership starts with connection. Follow through on your commitments. Your actions build trust. Embrace change as an opportunity for growth and innovation. And remember the golden rule matters: treat others with respect and fairness. And being a high-performing organization is not just a concept. It's a proven path to success. So with that, I will go ahead and hand it off to the Chair, but really just sincerely, Mike, thank you for all you've done.
Thanks, Allison. Thanks, Jeff, as well. With that, we'll bring it back to the board and see... Supervisor Hall, would you like to kick us off and talk about Mr. Dent?
I have only good stories. I think you have just been an incredible gift to this community. You came here. You've gone through so many different departments. You've led the way. That, what Allison just read, is just a true statement of how this whole organization runs and a good reminder of how we all need to keep in thought and be respectful. And for me, the legacy would be the housing. I love it. I get to go see Lone Oak on a regular basis, and I watch my 30 folks that live down there in senior housing that are thriving because of that program that you worked very hard to get. Drive by Cash and Fields. There's so many of these little things. You've left a legacy of the hard work with your team. I think that's the thing. You've been a leader and a team because it takes such a huge team to get this all to happen. I mean, I look through all this crowd, and I know you've worked with just about everybody in this room on some kind of a program or another. So again, like I say, I'm excited for your retirement. I think some of us wait too long to retire, and I hope that this next chapter is just going to be full of wonderful events for you and your family and hiking and biking and enjoying life. But I know you'll still be around. I know, and I did say, six months. Got to leave that six months on there. You say no, and then we'll come back knocking on your door. So Mike, thank you again, and nothing but best wishes for you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Supervisor Schofield.
Yeah, Mike, I'm kind of the same way. I know you've come up through the county and different departments, but the housing is the one that really stands out, I think, to all of us. You've done so much, and what we've accomplished, what you've accomplished, what we've accomplished together has been amazing, and you're definitely going to be missed. And we never did carpool to Nortech, did we? No, that's okay. You've done a great job, Mike. Thanks for your service.
Thank you. Supervisor Hall?
Thank you. Mike, it's been a pleasure working with you. And I have to say, on behalf of my constituents in District 1, thank you for everything you did for to get Cash and Field off the ground. That was a spectacular success. Went so fast. It was hard to do, but very helpful to my community, to our community, and you did an incredible job there. I also want to just highlight your child, your work with Child Support Services. Those are issues that didn't often come up to us at the board, but you helped take care of our children and our families in this county in a really big way and made such a great impact on the department. I have to thank you for your heartfelt work for this county. And yeah, best to you in retirement.
Thank you. Supervisor Swarthout?
I still think you're too young to retire. I'm going to keep on that, but six months, I already know which boards I'm going to invite you to join. So, but just echoing the comments of my colleagues, thank you for all the hard work. I know I had personal experience working with you in Grass Valley on the Brunswick Commons, which was not an easy project. And it came out fantastic. A lot of hard work went into that, and I think you were very instrumental in putting all the pieces together for the funding and the operations and how it was going to work. So you will be very much missed around here. I'm sorry I only got to work with you up here for a couple of years, but I know we're still going to see each other. What do we say, Rayleigh's? Or, well, you won't see me at the gym, but you never know after January, New Year's resolutions. But thanks for all your hard work and, you know, happy for what comes next. And I see the huge smile on your wife's face back there. I'm guessing she's very excited for you to retire.
Thank you. Mike, I've been smiling while I'm listening to all the comments because you and I, I've bugged you so hard with East County housing. Mike, I was a thorn in Mike's side. Poor Mike, listening to me talk about East County housing projects, and it's so hard in that neighborhood to find something to do. But we did it, and like, it's pending. And so I just wanted to congratulate you and extend the sincere thanks because you did it, and we did it right before you retired. So I'm stoked, and job well done. Thank you for your support on what we're doing in East County. And then I just wanted to mention, too, and I said it this morning with Steve Monahan's piece, but being able to be here for 30 years of service is quite an accomplishment. And the ups and downs of government and serving others through difficult periods and leading and all those things, it takes a lot, and I don't think people really recognize that. And so I just want to commend you on that. And sticking with the career in government and serving others is a noble thing to do. So job well done. I wish you all the best of luck in retirement. So I know you're going to enjoy it. And I like your no-plan concept. I asked Mike the other day, hey, what's the big plan? He's just kind of very ambiguous, and I think it's pretty cool. You can make it up as you go and really be present for your family. Thank you again for your service. And Supervisor Hall is going to read a certificate of appreciation and recognition for you.
Okay, bear with me. It's long. The print is tiny, so I'll do my best. But there's a lot of really great information in here about Mike. The County of Nevada Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing Mike Dent for 30 years of public service with Nevada County, including the last six years as the Director of Housing and Child Support Services. Mike Dent originally joined Nevada County in February of 1995 as a booking clerk for the sheriff's office and was quickly promoted to a correctional officer. From there, excuse me. From there, Mike worked briefly in Child Support Services as a child support specialist before he was hired as a deputy probation officer in 1998. He served in that role for four years before being promoted to probation program manager. In May 2014, Mike was appointed as Director of Social Services, helming one of the largest departments in the county. In 2018, when the Board of Supervisors prioritized affordable housing and homelessness, Mike was appointed Director of Housing and Child Support Services, where he spearheaded countywide efforts to address these critical priorities. It is from this position that Mike will retire from Nevada County on December 27, 2024. While serving as program manager in probation, Mike was committed to the safety of his team, clients, and the public. And as such, he became the department's first force options instructor, which included firearms, baton, and defensive tactics. During this time, Mike also focused on expanded collaboration with community partners, helping to bring in a multi-agency wraparound service to at-risk children in our community. During his time as Director of Social Services, Mike was active in the statewide Child Welfare Director Association, serving as co-chair of the fiscal committee. Mike was also integral in reducing the backlog of applications related to the Affordable Care Act, guiding the transformation of classifications, and participating in statewide efforts to reform the out-of-home placement process of justice and welfare-involved youth. Under Mike's leadership, Child Support Services is a gold star standard for excellence, consistently ranking among the top five performing counties statewide. His department collects and distributes nearly $7 million in child support annually, ensuring families receive the financial stability they need to thrive. Mike's numerous accomplishments on homelessness include developing a comprehensive plan, expanding and sustaining winter shelters, expanding emergency shelter beds, renovating the Odyssey House to expand treatment capacity, purchasing and remodeling the Koch and Form Motel into permanent housing, purchasing a building for the Common Resource Center. Mike also played an integral role in housing by developing around 200 units of affordable housing, serving hundreds of people, including Brunswick Commons, Empire Mine Courtyards, Lone Oak Apartments, Cash and Field, and more. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Mike worked with FEMA to procure trailers, lease space from the fairgrounds, and support the needs of vulnerable residents to recover in a safe environment and minimize spread in congregate settings. Mike Dent's commitment extends beyond his role at the county office, as shown by his many organizational and board affiliations. Mike has been on the hospice of the Foothills Board for over six years, served as president of the California Association of Probation Services Administrators, member of the Child Support Directors Association, member of the California Welfare Directors Association, board member of the county's Continuum of Care and its regional oversight board, the Homeless Resources Council of the Sierra, and served as county staff to the Adult and Family Services Commission. That makes me tired, just talking about it. The County of Nevada Board of Supervisors thanks and congratulates Mike Dent for his leadership, integrity, and commitment to excellence throughout his 30 years of service to Nevada County, and we wish him all the best in his future endeavors. Thank you so much, Mike, and congratulations.
I've prepared a speech. No, I'm just kidding. You know I don't like this attention on me, but I do appreciate it. You know, I've never retired before. In the last couple of months, these thoughts come to your mind, like, are you leaving it better than when you found it? You know? Could you have done more? And I think I've done what I could, and I think I did a good job through the 30 years. And it's just not me. You know, that was all, that's not me. That's a bunch of teams. That's a bunch of people doing the right thing. I think a theme you're going to see today with the next two board items is we are an excellent organization. Steve mentioned it earlier today. I've mentioned it. You go to other jurisdictions and you see what kind of problems they have, if they have problems. And, you know, it's, the leadership from the board to the CEO's office down is really reflective of the organization, and we have the best. And can't do it, you know, on my own. I'm really such a good team. But, you know, my number-one partner in life, Jackie. 35 years knowing her, 30 years, you know, saying, hey, I got to work till 1 a.m. and do searches with Narcotics Task Force. Oh, there's a snowstorm. I got to go set up the shelter. Who has my back is my wife and my strength. So that, and then the teams that we have. I've always tried to lead with a steady hand, not afraid to get dirty. And with that, I'm very humbled and appreciative of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, it's good to hear your words. And with that, we'd like to open it up for public comment. People here in the chambers like to come up and say a few words about Mike. We're looking forward to that.
Good morning. My name is Jeff Tynan, the edgerton for the VFW Post 2655 here in town. On behalf of the entire membership of the VFW, thank you, Mike. We first met in 2018 as I was taking over my position, coordinated with Mike when the warming shelters started to ramp up due to the cold weather. And we have had such a great partnership between myself, you, Luis De La Ora, quarter master, coordinating and working to make sure that we knew it was coming. It wasn't going to impede either CR routes or the post activities. And some of the things that you hear and we've heard is the selflessness of Mike Dent. When we had an overflow of rubbish, Mike would come down in his car, load that up, and take it up to the dumpsters here. If there was a problem, we'd reach out to Mike, and it was resolved immediately, either by himself or one of his team members, as he keeps talking about. We had an issue with a storage connects. It brought to Mike's attention. We came to an amicable solution. That way, those that are in need were served, and the veterans of Nevada County who utilize our Nevada City Building were taken care of. There has been such a partnership between our two organizations, and we are eternally grateful. Mike, we have a certificate for you. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it kind of highlights what we just talked about. And without your dedication, this program would not have been as successful for both us and those in need in Nevada County. So God bless you, brother, and enjoy your retirement. Yes, sir.
I'll see you at the gym.
Thank you, board.
Mr. Way?
Oh, no. Hey, buddy. Good morning, board. I would like to just come up to honor Mike. Luckily, I have known Mike for over 50 years. Our families grew up together. I attended kindergarten with his older sister. He was a lot smaller than me at that time, and he got really big. And I thought, oh, did I ever, like, pick on you? But anyways, professionally, though, Mike has just been a fabulous partner to work with. When he started with probation, he was always incredibly helpful to the schools in every position he's held. You can call him anytime for any question, and he helped out every department in my office. So I can't thank you enough for that. And then personally, over 50 years, we've grown up together. Our families have grown up together. I've watched his career blossom here in Nevada County and the amazing positive impact he's had on all of us in Nevada County. So, Mike, for that, thanks. I am going to block him on my phone because starting tomorrow, he'll start calling me going, what are you doing? You want to go for a hike? Can you go for a ride? I'm like, no, I'm working, dude. But anyways, a couple more years, I'll be there with you, buddy. All right. So thank you so much, Mike.
Is it over?
Don't be shy.
That's all right. That's okay.
Okay. Any other comments on behalf of Mike? Thank you for attending here, everybody. This is also a certificate of recognition for Steve Monahan for his 25 years of service to Nevada County as Director for Nevada County's Information and General Services Agency. And I'm going to turn it over to, again, to our chief staff, Jeff Thorbsby, to kick us off here.
Pleasure. Thank you so much, Chair Bullock. Again, I am deeply appreciative to get to introduce Steve Monahan. Again, I think, Steve, I met you right when I first started here at the county, and I worked closely in HHSA as the point of contact for IGS, and then really have been learning a great deal from you as I've transitioned throughout my career. But I just wanted, really pleased to really introduce you for 25 years of service. And so, I'll kick it over to Allison.
Thank you, Jeff. Well, it's not every day we get to honor someone like Steve Monahan, but after 25 years of incredible service, we're just not celebrating your career, but we are truly celebrating you as a legend. Steve has joined Nevada County in 1999. Now, let's all go back to 1999, and our biggest issue back then was Y-2K. From day one, he has been our North Star, leading the charge on everything from energy conservation to broadband expansion. We had a little reception for Steve this morning, and we went around the room, naming all the programs under Steve, and that's library, airport, facilities, purchasing, OES, and the list goes on and on. He's really been the leader that we could depend on to implement critical programs and services to our community and to the county. Steve didn't just lead with innovation, but he did it with heart. We teased Steve about the awards, the number of awards Ashamlin has. We teased him that he does not have enough wall space. He was the California Public CIO of the Year. He was top 25 doer, dreamer, and driver of technology. But if you ask Steve about his greatest achievement, it isn't his accolades, it's the team he inspired and the culture that he cultivated. Steve, you're leaving behind big shoes to fill, and we're going to miss your leadership, your vision, and your unique ability to turn complex problems into opportunities. Enjoy your retirement, and it's time for fewer board meetings and more days on the trail for you. So, thank you for your service.
Thanks, Allison. We have a lot to say, so I'll start on this side. Supervisor Swarthout.
So, before I came up to the county, I only knew Steve as the IT guy, because he was in all the meetings that I attended having to do with broadband and technology. And then, two years ago, I come up here for onboarding, and I'm invited to a meeting up at the airport, and it's Steve and all of the different department heads that he oversees. And I had no idea the depth and breadth of the work that you do, the airport, the library, all the facilities, now your department's managing the animal shelter contract. I mean, you are involved in so many things, and things that all work really well, which is a true testament to your leadership. So, I'm sorry, I only got to work with you for a couple of years in this level. I know, definitely still see you in the community. And if we ever build a restaurant at the airport, I think we're going to have to name it after you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hall.
Yeah, thanks, Steve, again, for your leadership. Again, we said a few things this morning. I'll just repeat some of them and add that I think it is so rare to have a leader like you who can cover so many topics so deeply, so boldly, and so calmly, and be successful at all of them. You really are a true model of excellent leadership with integrity and with looking forward. I remember, I mean, I think when I came on, started talking about energy and solar issues and what we could do more at the county, and I'm learning, oh, Steve's doing it already. Very quietly, he just did it all. And then, when we made broadband a board priority, and I got to learn that you've been working on it for years, and I think you were excited that you now had the, you know, the direction to go forth and do more, and really set the standard for so many counties trying to figure out how to make that work, and the innovation you brought to that issue. And I think we have yet to see the fruition of all the things you did that's going to be rolling out in the coming years, and we'll remember that that is because of your good work. And then, I have to just say again that in my role at CSAC and NACO, and attending those meetings with Jeffrey, I think, I would think, almost every single meeting we've been to, we've had to split up and go accept an award for you, for innovation, for this, for something else. You just are widely recognized across the state and across the country for the excellent work you've done on these issues that you've covered, and I have great admiration for all of that. And you deserve a really bike-filled, bureaucratic-less retirement. You've done your job so well. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks. Supervisor Schofield.
Yeah, Steve, just looking at all the projects locally that we've accomplished here, it's really amazing. But I also think back, too. I mean, we're fortunate to have you here, but you are recognized statewide, especially for the broadband initiatives. And you're just a very special guy, and the county has really gotten a lot from your many years here at the county. And I thank you for your service. You've been wonderful to work with, and I think of everything you've done, you're very quiet about it. You're a very quiet guy, so I hope, enjoy yourself out on the trail.
Thank you. And Supervisor Hook.
Well, I just would echo what everyone just had to say. I just think there's so many things. I mean, the little things are a day is, like, even on the computer when it comes up and they're telling you, you might have a phishing report. I know that comes from Steve when we started. Cybersecurity is one of those things, and, you know, I'm always, I'm scared to death of my computer half the time, going to hit the wrong button. And, you know, just those little things, RCRC, same things. Our rural counties have benefited from your knowledge and skills than getting it across to, back to the, really, to the national level. So, you have just made an impact. I was just thinking about this the other day, the Ops Center. Remember when that was this old dirt pad, and we went out there and went through to get that built? I mean, it's just, when you look around, there's a lot of Steve Monahan in our county, along with your teams. And I know that's what you said, it's your teams, but, you know, a team has to have a leader, has to have that concept of creation, and how are we going to get this dollars? How are we going to do that? And back to the HEW ability, man, like, there's, it's just, you've impacted this county in so many levels. And I know you know every trail on that bike, and I know you're going to go over them again while you are in retirement, and I, again, I'm excited for that. Again, I want to say, sometimes we wait too long to enjoy life, and I want you to enjoy it to the biggest, highest level, and know that you are just so appreciated here in this county. And says a lot about a county. Look, we have a 30-year employee, we have some 25 years. It must not be such a bad place. We're pretty unique, and it's because of leaders like you that make people want to be here, makes us all want to be better, be good people to our community. So, thank you so much, Steve, and best wishes. And, yeah, let's see, where's your family here today? Oh, there they are, over there. Thank you. You know, thank you. You guys, there's a lot that goes with this, whether there's an emergency or there's trips to be planned, and a family's an important part to have these guys' back. So, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, congratulations, Steve. I think a lot of it's been said, and I was just reflecting on CSAC and NACO and RCRC. I don't think I've been to a conference where your name hasn't come up on the big screen at some point for an award, and you're never there. Somebody else is always getting it. And the other story I thought about was interesting, is I got invited to a meeting with a constituent to talk about airport stuff, and I thought, wow, this is going to be great, I'm going to weigh in on the airport. Steve knew everything about airports, which can be kind of complex and fraught with kind of federal regulatory framework kind of stuff. But, yeah, I was really impressed to see that your depth of knowledge in everything across the board, start to finish. And for me, your leadership really, it's like what you leave behind, right? You're leaving behind something that's operating in your absence, and that's the mark of a true leader. You've built something that is going to sustain over time, and that's a legacy that you can be really, really proud of. And, again, we'll hope to see your fitness skyrocket on Strava every day when you're out riding your bike. So, with that, I just really want to say thanks, and very much appreciate your service to our community. I think Supervisor Schofield is going to read a certificate of appreciation for you.
This one's long, too, Steve, with small print. It's my honor to read this. The County of Nevada Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing Steve Monahan for exemplary 25-year career with the county as the Director of the Information and General Services Agency, IGS, and as an invaluable leader, role model, thought partner, and dedicated champion. First joining the county team in April 1999, Steve has continually been a North Star to the county organization and community alike. Since 2005, Steve has led the creation and development of a high-performing organization known for its world-class customer service and exceptional value to the county and its community. Steve has fostered an innovative and strong culture where employees love their job, are empowered to do their best work. This focus has ensured the agency's legacy, which will endure for generations. Steve's leadership extends across numerous transformative projects. He spearheaded conservation initiatives, implementing over $15 million in energy and solar projects while guiding the county's energy plan and community energy action plan. He negotiated the acquisition of vital properties, including commercial buildings and vacant lots, liquidated the county's 125-year-old hospital campus, and led the concept to completion development of $18 million County Operations Center. He also worked with the community to establish the Oak Park District, creating a new community park. In the realm of technology, Steve positioned Nevada County as a national leader in digital government, earning top rankings in the National Digital County Survey for over 20 consecutive years. He implemented IT governance frameworks, modernized the county's IT systems, and drove broadband expansion initiatives through strategic partnerships and local grant programs. His passion for community engagement culminated in the creation of a state-of-the-art technology center at the library, which was brought to life through partnerships, grants, and donations. Steve also established a robust cybersecurity program and developed a statewide credentialing initiative for IT leaders, teaching extensively on leadership topics. Beyond his operational accomplishments, Steve expanded the Office of Emergency Services from a one-person team to a highly effective organization, driving the award-winning Ready Nevada County Program. He successfully led efforts to renew and double the library's 15 multi-jurisdictional cable franchise agreements, then enhanced local infrastructures, and supported the creation of Nevada County Media Center. Steve's work has earned him numerous accolades, including California Public CIO of the Year, recognition as a top 25 doer, dreamer, and driver of technology in government, the Visionary Award for IT Leadership, the 2022 RCRC President's Award for his work on behalf of California's rural counties, and most recently, the California State Association of Counties Circle of Service Award for dedication to county government. His legacy is defined not by any single project, but by the enduring success of the IGS agency and the talented staff he inspired. The Board of Supervisors thanks and congratulates Steve Monahan for extraordinary contributions and exemplary service. Steve and his leadership will be profoundly missed, and we wish him all the best in all his well-deserved retirement. Steve.
Man, a few words, it's over to you.
Well, I think it's very humbling. I really appreciate it very much. A little loss at words. I echo a lot of what Mike said, he's a much better speaker than I am, where, you know, it really starts with the family, being supportive. And my wife and I celebrated our 35th anniversary yesterday. So, we moved up here to raise kids from Sacramento, and it's just turned into a wonderful life and quality of life due to, and there's one of my daughter there in the middle, who was one when we moved here. So, it turned into a really high quality of life to be able to live in this community and work in this organization. And a quick story, my father there came with me when we were in Sacramento, they were visiting from the East Coast, and I said, I want to drop off this job application, I'm thinking of getting out of my business, I was partnering in the business, and you want to drive up to Nevada City with me? And he said, okay. So, my dad was at the beginning of my journey here with Nevada County and drove with me to drop off my application in the HR department, and now he's here at the conclusion. So, thank you, Dad. Like I was saying this morning, this is a special place, it's a special community, and this is a special organization, and really, it's that stability. You have a CEO who's been here over 20 years and provides that continuity and that extreme leadership, and I don't think people understand how fortunate you are, what a talented CEO you have, who has the enthusiasm for public service and leadership. And again, as agency directors or department heads, we go up and down the state, across the country, and it's different here, it really is. And that starts with your CEO, it starts with all of you and your predecessors, and the stability of doing that. It's the team, again, like Mike, I didn't win all those awards, the team won all those awards, and the departments, it's not just IGS, it's partnering with the community, it's partnering with other county employees and other departments. So, thank you. It's been wonderful. I really appreciate it.
We're going to open up public comment. I think we're going to start with Chastity Benson from CSAC, who has a special award for you, Steve, so we're going to start with her. Another word from CSAC, and you're here for this one. You're present.
Thank you, Supervisor or Chair Bullock. I am so happy to be here. When we learned that you weren't going to make it to receive your award, we said, oh, no, 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 not this time. We have got to come and bring your award to you. I have a whole script here, but I'm not going to do any of it. I have such fond, fond memories of you. Nevada County has a special place in my heart, and I'll get a chance to talk more about that later. But a lot of that is because of you. I started at CSAC about eight years ago and had the opportunity to work with the late, great Bill Shiod. And one of his really proud moments was working with you to develop the IT program.
IGS. It's partnering with the community. It's partnering with other county employees and other departments. So, thank you. It's been wonderful. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve. We're going to open up public comment. I think we're going to start with Chastity Benson from CSAC, who has a special award for you, Steve. So, we're going to start with her. Another word from CSAC. And you're here for this one. You're present.
Good morning. Thank you Supervisor or Chair Bullock. I am so happy to be here. When we learned that you weren't going to make it to receive your award, we said, oh, no, 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 not this time. We have got to come and bring your award to you. I have a whole script here, but I'm not going to do any of it. I have such fond, fond memories of you. Nevada County has a special place in my heart, and I'll get a chance to talk more about that later. But a lot of that is because of you. I started at CSAC about eight years ago and had the opportunity to work with the late, great Bill Shied. And one of his really proud moments was working with you to develop the IT program for IT leaders throughout the state of California. It was the second CSAC Institute program that was designed specifically for IT directors to not only learn more about their craft, but to take leadership positions in counties. And the fruits of that labor has produced IT directors have been stable in California unlike any other department. We've even had some who are now gone on to be CEOs of counties. And that is because of your great leadership and dedication to not only your community, but to residents throughout this great state. You have always been kind to me. So, when Bill passed away, it was a struggle. I had to step into some really big shoes. And you reached out to me immediately. And it was a really tough time. We were in the, you know, the pandemic had just started. Your words were so kind. Your ability to say, "Chastity, whatever you need, I'm here." And you didn't keep your leadership to just IT directors. You also wanted to help make sure that the institute was sustained after Bill passing. And you said, you know, "Chastity, I can teach some other classes. You know, let's teach some professional development. Folks really need to understand what IT is, leaders do. I'll develop the curriculum." And at that time, I didn't realize that you had taken on this whole bigger job of managing multiple departments. But your heart of service is just exemplify. You exude, you know, what it means to be a public servant. And I am honored to be here today to present you with the 2024 Circle of Service Award. You are an amazing human being, and I'm so happy that I had an opportunity to get to know you. I appreciate you. Thank you. Oh, picture moment.
Chastity, thanks. And thanks for your leadership at CSAC and coming up here to recognize Steve. We appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. Anybody else step up and say a few words about Steve? Any callers?
No callers.
No callers? Okay. With that, we're going to take a picture with you, Steve. It's the last one. You have to bear through, but we're going to do this, and you're going to love it. Okay. This is pretty cool. We are going to figure out where we are. We're going to move on to item number 39. This is a certificate of recognition for Supervisor Ed Schofield. For more than 36 years of public service, including four terms as Nevada County's District Two Supervisor from 2008 to 2024, this is an item I think many of us are here to talk about and acknowledge Ed's service to this community. I'm going to turn it over again to our Chief of Staff, Jeff Dorisby, who's going to kick it off and lead us in this dedication.
Thank you so much, Chair Bullock, Honorable Members of the Board, Honorable Supervisor Schofield. What a pleasure it is to, you know, I feel very lucky. For the last eight years, I've gotten the chance to work with all the members of the board, including yourself. And part of that, I get an opportunity to kind of develop a special relationship with you and each one of you and working aside with you through a number of different things, whether that be SED Core, whether that be the Municipal Advisory Council, or Constituent Matters, or Insurance Commissioner. It's been an amazing journey. But I just want to say, it really is just a pleasure to serve you. And, you know, just the demeanor that you bring to the staff every day and your leadership is really inspiring. And you mean a lot to me. And I'll kind of kick it over to you, Allison.
Thank you, Jeff. So, Ed Schofield's remarkable dedication to public service spans nearly 50 years, leaving a lasting impact on our community. Ed has championed many community improvement projects, contributing to transportation, workforce, and economic development, and expanded library services. A leader is often measured by the people they surround themselves with. And as a mom, I often remind my kids, you are who your friends are. Surround yourself with people who inspire and elevate you. Ed not only surrounded himself with extraordinary individuals, as we could see here today, with the support of his amazing wife, Carol, who we all love, but also but also you can see in the front row, his lifelong friends who surprised him today and came from Oregon to help celebrate his retirement. Ed is one of those rare people who generally care for others and uplift them in return. Ed's authentic leadership and support have deeply resonated with staff, who will greatly miss you and your presence. You generally care, and we appreciate your collaborative spirit, the ability to inspire, have left a lasting impact on everyone who's had the fortune to work side by side with you. So, we celebrate and thank Supervisor Schofield for a lifetime of commitment for his contributions to Nevada County.
I have a lot to say, but I'm going to be, I'm not going to go last, but I'm going to, you're going to go last, but I'm going to go right before you. So, I'll talk about it then. How about Supervisor Hook? Would you like to lead us off?
I just said this was going to be the harder one. So, this is fun, though. Like, you know, at Rotary, we have a thing at Rotary. It's happy bucks, sad bucks. And you go and you pass the little thing around. So, today, my happy bucks, I'm so excited for you. But my sad bucks is that you're not going to be sitting next to me again. So, we'll go with that because your service to not just this organization, to Rotary, to Fair. I've known you since, since Fair, right? So, Fair's always been a really important part for me as a, as a 4-H leader and being involved in FFA and watching you be there 24/7 when we went through Fair stuff. And then, then the opportunity to get to come and sit here with you and work and the internal knowledge that you had to share on different subjects that we did. We did through a lot of firsts. We almost got recalled together, right? So, we, we did a lot of firsts together, right? And those are things I will just, I will cherish forever. I think that, I know that you'll be here and Carol, I just, truly, you two have been a great team. You've supported each other through so many things and through life here in this community. And like me, your family's been here since the beginning. That's always last of the beginning, right? So, we've all been here, and those roots are deep. And, and I'm glad you stayed here. You stayed here and gave back to this community. And I think that's just been, it's a gift for all of us, without a doubt. So, without a doubt, I just wish you great adventure in this next year that's coming. We're going to have some adventures there. And I know I'm going to see you here, whether it's at Rotary or at the Fair. I know I will see you at Fair. There's always those days for sure. I'm going to see you at five days at the Fair. Probably not here, but I'm going to see you at the Fair. I know. I love you, Ed.
That's awesome. Thank you Supervisor Hook. How about Supervisor Hall?
Ed, what can I say? It has been such a journey. When I started on the board and eight years ago, and I didn't really know anybody, and I had to figure out where I fit and who knew what and how things worked. And you were steady back then, and you've been steady all this time. I've been so impressed with your steadiness, your integrity about how you approach issues, your kindness. It took me a minute to understand your sense of humor. For a minute, I thought you were just mean. And then, and then I realized, actually, you were quite clever. And I've had some good laughs with you about that since then. So, I just want to honor your, the steadiness and integrity that you brought to this position. It's been a joy to work with you. I've enjoyed it. I'm going to miss you absolutely. I think, I think I'm going to be the longest-serving person once you leave. So, but, you know, you also contributed a lot, having that history and helping us understand how things worked. And your leadership as Chair of the Board was always just so, again, steady and kind. And, and I looked to you when I took the chair the first time. I thought, if I can do it the way Ed did, I'll be fine. So, thank you so much. And absolutely, huge congratulations to you and Carol and the chance you're going to get to go be with your grandkids all the time, right? And all the other things you have planned.
That's great. Supervisor, it's worth that.
So much to say, but like Carol, I'm going to get all teary. So, I, it's just been a privilege to know you and, and work with you. When I first, I first met Carol and Ed, when I moved back up here in the late 80s, early 90s, I joined Seroptimus, and I met Carol. And so, for the, for the first few years, I only really knew Ed as Carol's husband. I didn't know all the other things. And then, we were both served together on the Board of Directors for the Greater Grass Valley Chamber of Commerce for a short period of time. And that's when I got to know Ed and realized how many different things in the community that he was involved with. Not just the Fair, but he'd been with the city of Grass Valley, with the, you know, the male voice choir, with all the different things that you do in the community. It's just, it's just amazing. And I'm sorry, I only got to work with you for a couple of years up here, but I look forward to your next chapter and seeing you. And I think there might be a trip to Bodman in your future. And I hope to be able to, to enjoy that one, maybe, if that all works out with the choir. But it's just been a real pleasure and an honor to work with you. And, you know, I wasn't, before I got elected, I came to all the Board of Supervisors meeting. It was during COVID. And I have so much respect for how you handled that. It was such a difficult time for everybody, but I just really appreciated your leadership on the issues and your professionalism in dealing with all the things that were going on here. And I'm sorry, I didn't get to get recalled with you guys. Maybe next year. Anyway, I just, I wish you the best. I, I, there's been a little pressure for me to come and join your Rotary Club, so I might get to still see you on a weekly basis if I do that. But thanks for all you've done for our community.
Yeah, Ed, thank you. I have so much respect for you. I think the first time we met, I have a funny Ed story. I'm sure there's a lot of them. I did, I think some people in here went to the roast for Ed as well, which had many, many stories. When I was running for office, I called you and asked to meet with you. And you said, sure, come on down. We'll go to Rotary. Well, no, we'll talk in my office and then go to Rotary. So, we went to Rotary. My Rotary Club has a tradition that you can never have a guest pay for lunch. So, Ed and I pulled up to the front of the table, and it was like 15 bucks for breakfast or something. And I go, do you, do you guys have a tradition where, like, do you want me to pay? And he's like, yep. We don't have that tradition. But it was funny because I looked and he was just like totally stern, but I knew he was joking because he understood what I said from Rotary. So, I paid for my lunch, and that kicked off the start of our relationship. But one of the more touching conversations I've had with Supervisor Schofield was that same day, and we talked about what we, what we like to do. And we talked about Big Brothers, Big Sisters, because you've had a lifelong commitment to that organization. I had come off of a 10-year stint on their board. And so, you and I connected immediately on Big Brothers, Big Sisters and got to share about, you know, support a teen in, in the program and how we support people, young people in our community. So, I, I felt immediately like I could get good advice from you. And then, the other really fortunate piece for me is that I was your vice chair. So, I got some really good chair and training from you and was on Budget Subcommittee for two years with you. So, it was, it was really great to understand how it works and, and work with you. And then, you know, as, as we know, we can only talk to one person on most of the issues that we face here at the county. But on the issues that I didn't have a plus one, I would call Ed and just ask you questions about what was right, what was right, what was wrong, how to do it, how to do it right, and how to be the best possible person of service to our board and to the community that I could. And so, you always answered those questions and gave me the advice. So, thank you for doing that. I can't repay you, but I, I will. If you need anything, you can call us, and we'll be there for you, Ed. And I'm just so honored to be able to work with you. And I know people in our community, I still meet people in our community that have been around for a long time, and they ask about Ed, and they ask about what you're doing and how you are. And so, it's just an honor to share. The seat up here on the dais with you and, and your type of service to others is, it's inspirational to me. So, thank you. So, with that, we will open public comment, and I'm going to call upon a special guest, retired Supervisor Ted Owens, to kick us off on the public comment on behalf of Supervisor Schofield.
Chairman Bullock, Supervisors, it's a great pleasure to be here with you today. Supervisor Schofield, may I call you Ed? I recall traveling with, with Ed on the county business occasionally, the Ted and Ed Show, and we made fun of that. It gives me great pleasure to be here. It's very much an honor to celebrate your service, your public service, in particular, as a county supervisor here in Nevada County. The kind of person that you are, Ed, is very rare in public office. The humility that you have always exhibited, the care, the love of where you live. You are a wonderful supervisor for your district, but you were also a wonderful supervisor and cared about the entire county. I always appreciate your candor, your honesty, because Ed will tell you if he doesn't agree with you on something, but in the kindest of ways and with explanation. I learned a lot from you, Ed, and I've thought about what my comments might be today. And many of the good words have already been chosen. But with great love, I appreciate you, and I would like to thank you for something I think I failed to thank you for years ago. My last year on the Board of Supervisors, I was elected by my colleagues as Chair, but I could not accept it because I had other obligations that would not allow me to serve on the Budget Subcommittee. And for those of you that don't know, that is a big lift. It soaks up, if I recall, three, four, five weeks of your time. Almost every day, you might have a day off. But you sure learned budget, I'll tell you that. It is a big lift. And Ed turned to me and said, I'll do it. And you let me be Chair. And that was a huge lift. And it was with great humble and grateful appreciation, Ed, to you for doing that. But it also shares who you are as a human being. You're one of the finest, my friend. I love you, and I appreciate being here. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Bullock, Members of the Board, your HR Director, Steve Rose. I'm here today, Ed, to award you a service pin for 15 years. Someone told me that you've been asking about this. And this is a small county, and we were able to get one. So, I, I really want to extend the thanks and gratitude and congratulations for not only your 50 years of service to our county, but 15 years here. And I also want to thank you for last November, when you challenged me to do 100 pushups a day. And I am doing them every morning. So, thank you for that.
I'll mention, if you, if you look closely at Ed, and in the pictures, I think there's one of them up there, he's always wearing his he's always wearing his Paul Harris Award from Rotary. And that is like a mark of a great Rotarian. And now you have another pinned out in there, Supervisor.
No, that's my past president.
Oh, past president, okay.
The other one is my 10-year county pin. And you have to do 16 years to get it.
To 15 years, yeah. Yeah, it's beyond, yeah. But we were talking about other people that have done 30, and we were just gonna give them two 15-year pins later. Congratulations. Anybody who wants to public comment, come on up here. We do have Senator Dally's office, and Ms. Cookson, I think, is presenting something for us as well. And then Chastity.
Does Chastity want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Okay, okay. Good morning, Supervisor Bullock and Supervisors. My name is Yolanda Cookson, and I now represent Senator Megan Dally of the 1st Senate District. And I'm honored to be here to present a Certificate of Resolution from the Dallies, both former Senator Brian Dally, as well as current Senator Dally, Megan Dally. So do you want to come up here so I can give this to you? I'm not gonna read it, Ed, because it's only for 15 years of service. And whatever. We all know that you've served Nevada County endlessly. And my really fun, quick Ed story for everyone is, I am still, to my knowledge, the youngest female elected Grass Valley City Council Woman, and Ed is the youngest male. So we still get to be the youngest of some kind.
We'll go wait for the other awards now, Chastity. But Supervisor Schofield, you told me a story about a board that you were on that didn't allow women, and you changed that, if I'm not mistaken. Rotary, thank you. Yep, good job. Over to you. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I was arrested twice by Sheriff Moon and put in jail. I was never charged with any crime because I had not broken any law.
Sir, I'm gonna stop you just real quick. This is not general public comment. This is comment directly related to Supervisor Schofield. That'll come later. Thank you, though. We'll get back to you.
Hi, Supervisor Schofield. It is so good to see you. Again, I have a script, but I'm not gonna do the script. So sorry, Rachel, if you're watching somewhere. So this was so great for me to be able to come here and do a two-for-one with two of my favorite county people. Just don't tell the other 296 that. But you two really, when I started at CSAC eight years ago, really sort of took me under your wing. You're one of the first county supervisors that I really established a relationship. You and your lovely wife invited me to the Nevada County Fair. And I came down, and it was the first time I really experienced the fair from a county perspective, and the joy and the love and every intricate piece of the fair. You pointed out everything to me, which really gave me a new appreciation for county fairs. And the fun fact about that is a really good friend of mine joined me at the fair. Her name is Jaclyn Wong Hernandez. And she came with her family, and you all embraced her and her family in such a wonderful way, so that when we had the CPO position come up at CSAC, I gave her a call, and I was like, what do you think? And she said, I think so. And she applied for the job. But it was how you embraced her, where she wanted to be a part of what we were doing at CSAC and do more work for counties. And she talks about it all the time, and I think she was at the last county fair. You also helped me as I grew in my leadership role at CSAC and became more involved in leadership with the California Counties Foundation. And you were the Chair, or sorry, the Treasurer at that time. And I was super nervous. I had to present the audit and the budget. And you were just like, it's gonna be okay, Chastity. And you let me lead. You gave me the kudos. You gave me the confidence that I needed to understand that, hey, I can do this work. And it really also, you offered me the opportunity to understand counties. I'm pretty certain coming to Nevada County Fair was my first county visit. And it just opened up another opportunity for me to understand the breadth of the work that you all do. And you do it with a smile all the time. You're so kind. And I'm just really, I probably should have gone on the script, but I'm just so happy that I'm here to celebrate you and your retirement. And, you know, maybe you can teach an institute class soon or something like that. We'll give you a year or two. But you're such an inspiration. And we're really proud to present you with a resolution here from CSAC President and Executive Committee. Thank you, Supervisor Schofield, for your service.
Ed, I'm gonna read a Certificate of Recognition for you. This is a very long one. Oh, wait, we have more. Okay. Supervisor, excuse me, Sheriff Moon.
No worries. Board of Supervisors, have a seat, Ed. Yes. 16 years on our Board of Supervisors, have known you much longer than that. Really appreciate everything you've done for our community and our county. This last six years as being the sheriff, just unbelievable staunch support for public safety and our Sheriff's Office. So on behalf of all of the men and women of the Sheriff's Office, thank you so much for your leadership, being on the board, listening to our presentations, listening and coming out and seeing our staff work in the field. It means a lot to the men and women that are out there every single day. And on behalf of our organization, we're gonna let you wear one of these Sheriff's Office hats. Not very many people outside our office get these. So hopefully, when you're out in the community, when you're out on the deck chopping wood, doing all your things that you do in beautiful South County, you remember how much the Sheriff's Office supports you and your family.
Thank you, Supervisors. And I'm Jim Mathias, and I just wanted to say some nice things. Oh, I'll be nice, but I won't be brief. I'm kidding. I'm really grateful you're retiring. That'll give you more time to come to the Bearwood football games on Friday night. You'll be able to come support. I just wanted to, I couldn't let this day go by without saying some really nice things about you. 16 years of service. I don't know how you started when you were 15 years old, but we appreciate you starting then. Yeah. You know, I've known you a long time, and the heart of this man is just something that's really incredible. You left behind a really big legacy of some parts of my life. One of them, of course, is the Nevada County Fair. You've just done, I mean, through the glory years of the fair, you really built it up to something that's something in California that I don't know that anybody else could do. And I don't think anybody knows the hours that you put into that to make it what it is. They probably do. It's just, you know, it's a great joy for me to be able to go there and see the fruits of your labor. I've been a Nevada County resident my entire life, and I've seen the support that you have. Through my emergency services career, Chief Hacken here, and I are gonna both say some really nice things about you. But I will keep it brief, and I'll just say that you, I want to echo what Sheriff Moon said. You've been a great supporter of the community and of our first responders. And it's just really been great to be able to work with you, because I know when I came to you with an issue, that you would give it an honest shake and do the best thing for the community. You didn't always do what I wanted. That's okay, because you were representing your people in the South County, and almost always, we aligned in that. And I do appreciate the work that you supported through some of the big fires that we've had in Nevada County that we were side-by-side through and went through some difficult times, and I appreciate that. And then the last thing, you know, we were going through some changes in South Nevada County. And Supervisor Schofield said, well, let's get the community together to give me some input. And you started the South Nevada County MAC and was able to allow me to be a participant in that. And I appreciate that, because that really gives that hole in the community where we don't have a regular meeting to represent what's happening in Nevada County, and gave us a chance to do that. You got a lot of input into the Greater Higgins Area Plan from the community, and you took that to heart, and you brought it to the Board and brought a great product up. And I mean, I could go on and on, but let's not do that. Let's just say thank you very much for your years of service. You're appreciated. You're a great man, and it was an honor to work with you. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair Bullock, members of the Board. My name's Landon Hack. I was graciously replaced Chief Mathias in the North Division Operations Assistant Chief position for CAL FIRE Nevada UBA Placer. So I've been in the position for just a couple of years, and I've been very lucky to have some interaction with Supervisor Schofield. And so I just wanted to come up here. I will never talk as long as Chief Mathias. But on behalf of Chief Estes in the Nevada UBA Placer unit, we just wanted to say thank you very much. Congratulations, and enjoy your retirement. You've been very, very involved with all of our operations in supporting everything that we do in the unit, and a true cooperator with us in supporting our folks that are out in the field. So thank you.
Lee French, resident of District 2. I just couldn't sit there and not say how much I appreciate what Ed has done for the Alta Sierra area. Ed has always answered the phone, always been one of those people who will go out of his way to make sure that his district is the best and is supported properly. Ed has come to many of the various meetings that I've attended there, such as fire meetings and ASPOL and so on. This is quite a chore for someone who has so much on his plate. And I want to show my appreciation to Ed. He's always been there. He's always supported me. He's always given me good advice. And Ed, I'd really like to campaign for you again, but I guess that's not gonna happen. I just want to say thank you, Ed. I really appreciate what you've done on the community of the residential area. And I know that you had a lot on your plate for the guidance of the entire county. But it did boil right down to the community itself, and you really took good care of our community. Thank you.
Good morning, Martin Pult, former CFO for the county. On a couple notes, Ed, I just wanted to say, number one, I think the Budget Subcommittee process, as was mentioned, former Supervisor Owen, it is an arduous process. It takes a lot of dedication. And I remember at least five times, I believe, it's hard to count, but it's a huge, it is a big lift, and the support you gave to the Budget Subcommittee and staff during that time, I mean, resonates today. You were in the Budget Subcommittee for this current budget. And I think as a steward, no? Okay. Okay, not this budget. I apologize. We had two other excellent supervisors in there. But I just wanted, as a steward for 16 years, I've been in the county for 20, where I was working here for 20 years. And I remember, I believe, when I was in the Mental Health Department, you were on the Mental Health Advisory Committee. So I've had a longevity of working with you. But as a steward of the finances of the county, I think you and I, retiring in the same year, so to speak, I mean, we were leaving it in great hands, which I appreciate. But I just, that legacy is tremendously appreciated. And I almost had a tear come to my eye on a personal note, Ed, because just working in the adjacent office with you and being able to work with you, I mean, the camaraderie, the level of empathy that you have for people, the fair-handedness that you have, I think is unprecedented from my view. You're an extraordinary person, and I really appreciate all the time I got to spend with you and with your wonderful wife, Carol, too. I've had some great interactions and experiences with both of you. I'm not sure if there's a royalty or something of Alta Sierra that you could be designated, but we have to make some titles for you. So thank you.
Thanks, Martin.
Chair Supervisor, I'm Don Hillman. I knew Ed now for about 40 years. I'm a fellow CEO from Oregon. I didn't travel 600 miles to not say something. So I was with Ed back in the mid-'90s when we presented him with the Western Fairs Hall of Fame Award. It's very hard to get. Very few people have them, and I was lucky to be a presenter. And what I heard today is really what Ed is all about. We used one word back there for Ed. He has it. It is exactly what was discussed today. He has that, well, he has it. He can talk. He can move. He can do all the things that you expect not only a supervisor to do, but a fair CEO. And I met Ed about 35 years ago in Seattle on a trip up there with the fair people. Known him ever since, and you were really happy, or you should be very happy, to have had him for the last 16 years. He's that type of guy. So Ed, from all the people in the fair industry and all the folks that traveled over 600 miles to see you, congratulations.
Well, I couldn't let Don talk without giving you the benefit of my awesome speaking voice. That's a long story. But I want to tell you a little bit about how this came to be. It really started about 30 years ago. Actually, when I first moved to California to manage a little fair up the road in Calaveras, Ed and Carol were the first people that I met in the California fair industry. So I probably have the distinction of knowing them longer than anybody here. But that doesn't matter, because we are the crazy eights. I mean, we've become friends for a long time. We've traveled together. We've watched... I mean, we've become friends for a long time, we've traveled together, we've watched our families grow together, but about 30 years ago, when my wife and I got married, we had a small wedding at our house, and I, after I walked in, I looked in the back row, and these four had crashed our wedding. True story. So we decided about a year or so ago, actually St. Patrick's Day a year ago, when Allison was in Salem visiting her son, who's going to Willamette University, right around the corner from where we live, we had them for corned beef and cabbage for dinner, and one thing led to another after a couple bottles of wine, and we were telling her about the story of them crashing our wedding. So, and we actually have a picture of them, not a very good picture, standing in the back with their arms folded, and that was the night that we planned the hatch that, by golly, let's crash Ed's last meeting. So since last March, the six of us have been quietly planning this trip, and, well, we had a mole, Allison was our inside person, but like Ed, we couldn't be here without saying something nice about Ed, and Don said, you know, the word that comes to his mind is Ed's got it. The one that comes to my mind is Ed's a true gentleman, and we love him, we've been knowing each other for a long, long time, and hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, he'll actually make another trip to Oregon and stay for Tuesday, because the last few years, he always had to run home Monday, because he wasn't missing a meeting, so Ed, congratulations, we love you, man.
So great to hear those stories.
I came to Grass Valley in the fall of 1991 as an intern under Ed Schofield, when he was CEO of the Nevada County Fair. I retired 12 years ago as the CEO of the Kern County Fairgrounds in Bakersfield. I learned so much from Ed. How's your budget? Oh, I'm not going to tell the story. I screwed up Ed's budget as an intern. I thought I was a great computer wizard, but I hit the wrong key, and something like that, it's been a long time. Yeah, it was 200 grand, but I wouldn't have missed this, Becky, my wife, and I wouldn't have missed this for anything, and you have been such a great supporter of me, of all of us, and a great institution in the fair industry. Love you, man.
Madam Quirk, are there any callers?
No callers, Chair.
Okay.
And Chair Bullock, if I could?
Yes, please.
Thank you, I just have to say, now going on almost 10 years of working as a county council, I have served a variety of board members, and the integrity, the fairness, the way you set an example for the other board members, and the amount of energy you spend making sure you are serving your community is absolutely outstanding, and I just want to thank you for being able to work with you.
So we're not in a hurry, if anybody has additional comments, please jump up there. Okay, you think about it, and I'll read this certificate. This is a certificate of recognition for Ed Schofield. The Nevada County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in recognizing Ed Schofield for more than 36 years of public service, including four terms as Nevada County's District Two Supervisor from 2008 to 2024. Ed was elected to the Grass Valley City Council in 1975 and held office until 1982, when he was appointed as the Secretary/Manager of the 17th District Agricultural Association, better known as the CEO of the Nevada County Fair. He served as the Fairground CEO until 2008, when he was elected as the Nevada County District Two Supervisor to serve his first four-year term from '09 to 2012. During that time, he served as Vice Chair in 2010 and Chair in 2011 and 2012. Ed was elected to another term and served as Chair in 2015 and 2017, and he was elected for his third term through 2020, and then in 2021, he was elected again to serve his fourth term, serving as a Chair in 2023. During his tenure, Ed contributed as a member of the Nevada County Transportation Commission, Transit Services Commission, the Nevada County Airport Land Use Commission, the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District Board, and others. Moreover, he was a member of the Board of the Nevada County Economic Resource Council and the Workforce Development Board, also known as the Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium, NORTAC, and we know about where you drove to Redding for NORTAC. He also served as the County Representative to the California State Association of Counties, CSAC, and its Treasurer on its Executive Committee, where he received the distinguished CSAC Circle of Service Award for his service in 2022. Among his many accomplishments, Ed led efforts to strengthen economic development in Nevada County, including working hard with constituents, staff, and his colleagues, leveraging balance towards legal enforcement, economic vitality, and public safety, on developing the county's policy and ordinance on cannabis cultivation, often demonstrating an ability to listen and guide constructive dialogue that promoted equity and reason. Other accomplishments of note included advocating for wildfire insurance reform and holding the first joint town hall meeting in 2019 with California Insurance Commissioner Lara on the crisis of the availability and affordability of wildfire insurance, establishing the county's second municipal area council, known as the South County MAC, to provide a formal mechanism and community conduit to update the Greater Higgins Area Plan, leading and collaborating with Caltrans and Highway 49 Safety Coalition, to designate Highway 49 as a safety corridor to increase safety infrastructure, and California Highway Patrol Enforcement, helping to navigate complex and often controversial development projects, including Rincon Del Rio, Dark Horse Dog Bar Bridge replacement, and the widening of Combi Road, and subsequent sewer extensions, directly supporting challenges of special districts, including the Bear River Recreation and Park District, approving the county's first Recreation Resiliency Master Plan and Economic Development Action Plan, and engaging with the community to empower staff, the Public Health Department, and the business community alike during the unprecedented outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. Of all Ed's accomplishments, perhaps the most notable is the longstanding impression and precedent that he has set on the importance of working with others, whether in agreement or disagreement, through kindness and collegiality. His approach is recognized across the state as an example of how to make meaningful impact while holding intact the core tenets of public service, and his approach stands as a model for the Nevada County Board of Supervisors and other counties across the state. Therefore, the Nevada County Board of Supervisors extends its deepest gratitude and congratulations, Supervisor Ed Schofield, for his many, for his more than 36 years of public service. He'll be greatly missed by his fellow board members, staff, and the public alike, and we wish him all the best in future endeavors. Okay, we can join for a picture, Ed, this time, this is about you. many days to come, you're going to receive phone calls and text messages and best wishes, so thanks, everybody, for participating, and we're going to go on to a break here for 10 to 15, oh, I'm sorry.
I get to say something.
Ed, we're going to turn it over to you now, that's what I meant to say.
You know, I love the fact that my friends from Oregon and the fair industry came down to honor me today, it's very special. I just kind of want to point out, too, during the Snowmageddon of 2022, Team Rubicon was a very big part of it. Team Rubicon, Bill Blair, very big part of that program, so, Bill, thank you. I'm nervous. It's just kind of an honor to have this day today, and it's an honor to share it with people like Mike Dent and Steve Monahan, because these are the people that really make it work. I mean, we sit up here and we make policy and decisions, but nothing happens without this team out here, and I'm telling you what, we've got an amazing team, I think we'd all would agree with this. I think about all the great projects that have been completed in my time, you know, I'm really pleased with the work that's been done with State 49, Highway 49, and some of the projects that are coming forward. The Operation Center, there's so many big projects, Steve, that you were involved with, that we get to take credit for. Of course, we get to take credit for some of the other things, too, like Diana Gamazon up there and cannabis, you know. But you know, I think, one of the things that I've really appreciated the most, first of all, let me put out, my friends from Oregon, but also my friends from Grass Valley South Rotary Club out there, and a wonderful team, and the toy run's coming, and we're going to have a presentation later on that today, so Shannon, great job that you do. I just think about what means the most to me having been a supervisor. The people that I represent has been very special, but working with this, with this group, I've been here today, this morning, with Steve's little recognition up there, thank goodness I don't have to compete with you with all those plaques, my goodness. That's, I think, the thing that I'm going to really miss the most, is working with this team. I don't think there was ever a day when I walked up those steps and into that office that I didn't know that there was going to be a smiling face that would be greeting me there, supporting us, supporting me. Thank you to everybody that's part of this Nevada County team, it's very special. But I also want to say what's been really special to me is working with all my colleagues over 16 years. God bless you, Ted Owens, Ted was on the original board when I showed up, representing District Five. There's always somebody on District Five that, you know, they have to, they want to make sure they get their share up there, you know, they, some very special people, but all of the people, I, it's, it's just been such an honor to serve with these colleagues and the people that have been colleagues with me in the past years, some very, very specialty people. And you know, as I look at what maybe gives me the most pride in serving up here, I don't think you would ever guess this, I think it was COVID. It was COVID, where, there were some of those 3-2 votes that were really, really hard to make, and this board, and the board, Dan Miller, and Lisa, I know you were involved with that, we maintained our professionalism, no matter what happened down here, and out at the fairgrounds with a meeting I'll never, ever forget. It was just a very special time, hardly you walked into it, I think they tried to recall you, too, you'd never even been to a meeting. I just take great pride in it that we came out of that as a very professional team, and I think Kit often makes note of that, that we're a good team to be a part of, and I love all of you guys, I love everybody I've served with, Ted, you're one of them, buddy. So thank you, thank you so very much. Now we can take a break.
Now it's break time. We have one more plaque, Ed, for you, and you can take this down, we can get more pictures, and everybody can shake Ed's hand, so thank you. We're going to recess for 10 or 15 minutes, we'll be right back. We'll be right back. Welcome back. We'll call the meeting back into order. I had a great time acknowledging the service of Supervisor Schofield. We're going to move on to item number 40. This is a recognition of District 2 Supervisor Ed Schofield's Board and Commission appointees: Richard Stallman of the Airport Commission, Craig Ferrari Fish and Wildlife Commission, Laura Duncan, obviously Planning Commission. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Schofield, and we can go from there.
Well, it's my honor to recognize my commissioners representing District 2, and that would be Richard Stallman with the Airport Commission, Craig Ferrari, Fish and Wildlife Commission, and Laura Duncan, the Planning Commission. And Craig apparently was here earlier, but Craig is a very interesting man. And he and I, at any given time, I think we always had respect for each other, but we often had our differences also. But Craig's been with the Fish and Wildlife Commission for, since 1993, I believe, is what, what I said. And when it came to that commission, he was truly dedicated to it. Very, very fine man when it came to that. And I don't know if, if he's actually stepping down or not. I don't know. But Craig has done a fine job on that commission. Richard Stallman was a little, a little bit controversial when I first appointed him to the Airport Commission, because he had been the fairgrounds, what do you call it, manager-director up there at one point. So there was some concerns that it might be that he wants it run his way and not, not the director that was in there. And to my knowledge, anyways, Richard has served the Airport Commission very, very well, did an excellent job up there. And I'm very pleased that all my commissioners have stayed with me all the way through my term. And of course, Laura, and Laura is here today. Where are you, Laura? Laura and Peter? Yeah, there you go. Laura's just been a rock of the Nevada County Planning Commission. I truly believe that. She just has a way, she comes out of the planning background, so that I, she knew, she really understood what was coming. It's a very, very difficult position. I always say that the Planning Commission has really the hard work. We tend to deal more with the emotional end of it up here. But there's an incredible amount of knowledge that you have to have on each one of those projects. And Laura has been that person that you could always count on. You never knew which way she was going to vote, but you knew she was doing what was best for our county. So Laura, and how many years have you been doing this? You went, you started with Supervisor Connect?
I did.
Yes. So she's gone through Supervisor Horn, and now myself. Laura, thank you, thank you for your dedication. Do we have a certificate to read for her? You get a certificate. Not the $25 Starbucks card, but hey. Laura, it's very simple, but you know, this is, there's more to it. This is for your leadership and contribution to the administration progress of the county of Nevada while serving as a commissioner on the Nevada County Planning Commission since May 2, 2000. Laura, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the dedication, especially for your 16 years of my term. Can we get a picture? Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. Maybe we'll let Laura say something, too. Yes, yeah, go ahead, Hardy. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Laura, do you have, we want to say a few words on, on your behalf. Do you want to sit with Jeff Thorbsby? Yeah, say, let's, let's hear from you.
It's a bittersweet moment. I am looking forward to it, and I knew when Ed went out, I was going I am looking forward to it, and I knew when Ed went out, I was going out. So it felt a little better knowing that he would be there with me. But it has been an honor, a complete honor, an unexpected honor and a privilege to serve Nevada County and to be Ed's representative on the Planning Commission. I have really treasured and valued my time here, and I know most of you, and I really thank you, too, for your kind input and guidance through the years. But I also want to acknowledge that it would not have been as easy to do the job if it weren't for all the great county staff, past and present. I mean, I think fondly about a lot of folks who are no longer here. But they really did make the job far more enjoyable than one might imagine. So thank you again. I appreciate the time and opportunity to serve Nevada County.
Supervisor Hook?
Oh, just thank you, Laura. You have been a rock on that commission. I think that everybody respects and has appreciated your leadership on that commission. I know, watching them, and I've learned so much. You've been a great, you were fabulous chair, and you really kept things moving smoothly. You were really, really good at that. I had no idea it was 24 years, though. So congratulations and thank you. Thank you for that dedication and time that you've given to Nevada County. Really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hall?
Yeah, thank you, Laura. I don't think people understand how much work Planning Commissioners do and have to do. You get volumes of information sometimes and really have to understand the regulations, the law. I mean, it's a bigger job than most people recognize. And so the fact that you've done it so well and stayed so long and provided that stability to the Planning Commission is much appreciated. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Swart?
Sure, thank you. What can I say? I've known Laura for many, many years, and I really appreciate how long you've stuck with Nevada County. Before I got elected up here, Laura was always my go-to call when there was a project coming forward to the Planning Commission, and she was always able to give me the great information and share her thoughts on what was going on, and I've always really appreciated that. And thank you for kind of taking my planning commissioner, who was the newest person up there before there's been some changeover, but kind of taking him under your wing and mentoring him and helping him show him the ropes, and as I know, had developed a nice relationship. So you will be very missed. I know I'll still see you, but I'm looking at some boards to get you involved with, too. So retire, you're too young, you're also too young to be retired, 100%, but maybe in between horseback riding and a few other things that you've got going on in your life, you can come back up and visit us once in a while. So thanks for your years of service, and you will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Laura, yeah, thank you. I just wanted to pass along my appreciation for your service to the Planning Commission. I got to serve on the Planning Commission with you as an appointee for Supervisor Anderson. And I was, I came off of the Town of Truckees Planning Commission for quite a while, and then when I went, I jumped up here on the dais with you, and I thought, wow, this gal really knows her stuff. This is really impressive. And I was really glad to see that because I really would hoping the chair and you, for part of that time, would call me last so I could figure out what the heck was going on. So that was good. And again, I kind of echo the comments of Supervisor Hall. You know, the packets, the Planning Commission packets are like eight inches thick, and it's a lot of reading and a lot of work, and it's kind of behind the scenes, and it's just a lot of, it's pretty hard to digest. And so you somehow navigated doing that over and over again. And then, which I got the honor of working through the mine with you, which was really interesting to see how the Planning Commission worked through all that and gave the board some really sage direction on where we're headed and how to get there. So thanks for your service to our community and look forward to seeing what you're going to do next. And you and I disagreed on other things in the community, and we got to arm wrestle, but we're still great friends despite those changes, which is a mark of a wonderful human being. So thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Back to you, Ed. Oh, here's two more. If they're here. Yeah, we can open it up to public comment now if anybody would like to say a few words on behalf of the appointees for Chair Supervisor Schofield. Go ahead and step up, yeah. I know it is. This is not public comment, this is just on, almost there, though. Any, Madam Quirk, any callers on the line?
No callers.
Okay.
But Chair Bullock, I would love to say something. Laura, thank you for your time on the Planning Commission. We worked together for a long time. You brought great stability to that board and great historical knowledge to the community and staff, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks for your words.
Yeah, just final thank you, and I think we'll have a picture now.
Sounds great.
Okay, moving on, we are going to open up general public comment. Members of the public shall be allowed to address the Board of Supervisors on items not appearing on today's agenda that are of the interest of the public and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Speakers are encouraged but not required to give their name and district of residence. Please direct your comments to the board, not the audience or staff. No individual may speak more than once during general public comment. Please note that each speaker will be given three minutes, at which point your microphone will automatically be turned off. Therefore, please keep your comments clear and concise. In the interest of civil discourse, it is the responsibility of the chair to ensure public comments are conducted in such a manner that avoids disruptive activity, promotes mutual respect, keeps comments focused on issues, and avoids personal attacks. Time limits may be modified at the chair of the board's discretion, and you can provide comments by speaking directly to the board from inside our chambers or by calling 530-270-3474 to comment live over the phone. If you want to make public comments by phone, please call in at the beginning so that we can hear you and make sure we get you in the queue. With that, we are going to open up public comment, and please come up to the podium, let us know where you're from and what your name is.
Good morning. It was wonderful to see all the warm thoughts for Ed and the legacy there. My name is Todd Dubois. I have a home on Rollins Lake at the end of Rollins View Drive, and I am here to get some allies at the board level and with the public to address a policy issue I see that the county has, and it makes our whole community less safe. The background is that the county uses a company called Lexipol for policy, at least for the Sheriff's Department, and that policy states specifically that should there be an easement or road dispute, neighbors should litigate. This is specific policy within Lexipol, which is a company out of Texas, which is run by police and lawyers. I completely understand that the county's intention with this policy is to reduce their liability and litigation risk, but the reality, the implication of that is locally, what that is directing is that all neighbors should sue each other if there's any road disputes. And I don't want to go into the details, but it's been four years now, and there's five litigations. It's escalating to the criminal level over a minor easement situation on Rollins View Drive. So tens of thousands of dollars in litigation between the neighbors destroyed the neighborhood. Everybody hates everybody. Everybody's bitter. And of course, the county's position is essentially run and hide because they don't want to get sued. So if you're following me, countywide, we're talking about fire roads not being maintained. And you know what happened in Paradise, and you know what's coming to Nevada County someday. So Hardy has my email, again, Todd Dubois. I am interested in considering political action to get that policy changed, and I would appreciate your support. I am available on LinkedIn. Jennifer Walters in County Council has my information, so please let me know, public or board level. Please contact me, and we can discuss if it makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments, Todd.
Yeah, my name is William Dolman. I've been a resident of Nevada County now for about 40 years, and I was arrested twice by Sheriff Moon and put in jail. I was never charged of any crime because I had not broken any law. This harassment happened twice. The second time, as of the first time, I was denied access to a phone call, a chance to connect with an attorney, a chance to be read my Miranda rights, a chance to go in front of a judge to plead my case. I was told by the sheriff, Ms. Moon, that she, not our judges, has the right to arrest, try, and as well sentence me. This is why I protested my denial of my rights by stuffing paper towels into my jail cell's toilet and flooded the floor with just about one inch of water, it wasn't much, of the jail. They then responded by denying me any drinking water for two days or any water for washing my hands or anything else while I was in jail for three days. Sheriff Moon told me that all judges were incompetent so that it was her job to step in and handle this matter and to continue to deny me any rights which I have. When I was arrested, I had $800 cash in my pocket. This I was going to use for rent and food. When I went to leave the jail, there was only $650 left. So I took the $650 to the sheriff, and I said, this is the wrong amount. I had $800 cash in my pocket, and gave her the $650 check and asked her to give me the right amount. I never heard anything back. So, you know, I am, you know, on food stamps and, you know, elderly, and I really can't work much anymore, and that's a lot of money for me. And so, you know, I would like there to be some justice. And so I'm not sure what to do. I could go to, come here to the supervisors, you, to ask for your help.
William, thanks, sir, your comment, your time is up today, but maybe CEO Lehman, maybe we could have somebody discuss things with William. We'll follow up with you. Yeah, thank you, sir.
So Erin could follow up with you and get more information.
Thank you.
My name is Don Fraser. I've spoke up here before about asking for the supervisors to pass a resolution of ceasefire in Gaza, but that's way past, it's way beyond that now, and I'd like to ask the supervisors to pass a resolution calling for a complete arms embargo. We spent $23 billion in the last year. I know there are folks up here that think that this is not a local thing, but if you take $23 billion and divide it by 50, and then divide it by 58, which is the number of counties in California, you'd see how much money could be spent elsewhere, and we might be able to use that money for fire prevention, things like that. It's Christmas time, and I don't know how many of you go to church, but I'm assuming most of you do. I'd like to give you a little bit of homework prior to the next, I don't know when the next meeting is, it should be the 24th, but I don't know if you're having one on Christmas Eve. But at any rate, if you go on YouTube, look for I'm Bisan, B-I-S-A-N, I'm Bisan from Gaza and I'm still alive. And it's a young woman who's photographed her experience in Gaza since October 7th, and she won an Emmy. There's a number of, they're about eight, nine, 10 minutes long. I'm Bisan from Gaza and I'm still alive. I'm Bisan from Gaza and we're picking olives. I'm Bisan from Gaza and Israel is trying to push us into the sea. Check it out and see what it's really like, what's happening over there. It's been reduced to rubble. In one of them, it's I'm Bisan from Gaza and I'm fleeing for the seventh time. Steve Monahan talked about how this is a special community, and I totally agree. But community goes beyond geographic borders. We're all human beings. I've been to Palestine, I've worked beside Palestinians, they're human beings. What's happening to them is tragic, and silence only admits it. I don't know who said it, so I can't attribute it, but there's a saying out there about, have you ever wondered what you would do if there's another Holocaust while we are doing it? Thank you.
Don, thank you for your comments.
Hello, Shirley Osgood here from Grass Valley, District Three. Ed, I have one, I don't know you, but the last time I was here, I was talking about an accident in front of my house, and you wrote it down. You made a note of it, like you cared, and I thought you were going to follow up. So I want to thank you for that because it's not even your district, but I noticed that. I'm also here to ask for a ceasefire resolution from this group. I've got a bunch of scattered notes. As you all have probably heard, numerous groups have identified what's going on over there as a genocide, most recently possibly Amnesty International. I don't think it's really a question anymore. Also, I know you don't really think that it's our business as a county, but I do want to just put it out there that Beal Air Force Base is in our backyard, and I challenge you to really look into what's going on there that relates to what's going on in Gaza. It's a premier ISR base, intelligence surveillance reconnaissance. We have connections in many places overseas, and I would just challenge you to check that out. I also just want to mention that we have sent 6,500 230-kilo bombs in the last six months to Israel. One of these kills or injures everything within 20 meters of where it lands. Not only that, we have sent 14,900 kilo bombs to Israel to target densely populated areas. We are complicit in this, and I believe personally that it's up to every one of us to do anything we can. and I believe personally that it's up to every one of us to do anything we can. It's up to every group to do anything we can. And I guess I'm, oh, I do want to mention AIPAC, the American Israel Public Affairs Committee, has invested $100 million to lobby against people running for office who stand up for Palestine. And it's a corrupted deal, and I hate to see my tax money, I'm still paying taxes, going for killing people over there, and all the suffering that's happening to children and innocent people. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Shirley.
B. French, District 2, Alfa Sierra. I've brought up the problem of the abandoned house in my community, which is a disaster zone. It's just a disaster waiting to happen. It's been abandoned for 20 years. It's uninhabitable. All the wiring and plumbing has been destroyed in it, taken away. It cannot even be hooked up to PG&E. Additionally, the building itself is deteriorating and is falling apart. We need to know more about this, how this is going to be approached. It's a potential disaster, not only to our community, but to Nevada County itself. Communication up till now has been practically nonexistent. I had a discussion with Code on the 19th of November, and we discussed maybe having a meeting with the community, or those that could attend. And it didn't matter where, but it turned out that I'd like to have it here and discuss the problem. Sent out an email the 3rd of December, asking for status of how this meeting was going to be set up, in that we had discussed around the 4th of December to have this meeting. So far, I've had no communication back from this email. It tells me that there's probably no ordinance to protect the residents of the county from this threat. And I'd like to have that discussion along with the residents. We need to know what's going on. How is this going to be approached? What is the process? We have a lot of questions, and we'd like to be able to participate in this thing, to see how we can help, if any. But at least we want the communication to know what's going on, and what the next steps are, and how we can protect ourselves. I'd appreciate the Code Department to come back alive and start talking, and give us what we need to proceed with this. Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. I saw some heads nodding from some of our staff, so I'm sure they're working on this with you, and we'll get back to you. Some information to you.
Hello, and thanks to all of you, retiring or not, for your public service. I know how many hours you spend working on things that aren't even in your purview. My name is Jeffrey Gottesman. I'm here on behalf of the Peace and Justice Center of Nevada County. I'm a Nevada City resident, and I'm also a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. And the reason I'm here is because I'm concerned that in this holiday season, it's going to be difficult for all of you, knowing that the year is almost done, and we still have no ceasefire and weapons embargo resolution on the agenda at the Board of Supervisors. And I'd like to encourage you to put one on before the end of the year. And, you know, just keep in mind that while we're all celebrating the holidays, that every day, there's a five-year-old girl having her leg amputated, being an orphan, having lost her parents, and starving to death as the result of the tax dollars that we are sending to buy the munitions that are keeping aid from being delivered to keep people alive and to help them deal with their medical problems. There's, you know, just one example of how that money is being used is that the arms that are being sent to Israel, the IDF forces are protecting mobsters who are raiding the trucks with food and medicine that are headed into Gaza, and then selling them on the black market. And these are our tax dollars going to do that. I urge you to place a resolution for weapons embargo and for a ceasefire resolution on the agenda before the end of the year. Thank you.
Jeffrey, thanks for your comments.
Hello, I'm Ann Johnson. I live in Nevada County in District 4. And I would like to talk to you about this scarf that I'm wearing. It's called a kaffiyah. Is it okay if I hang it on the podium here so you can see it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. It's, you know, a nice work of art and craft. And I recently, it's a Palestinian scarf. I recently heard that the last place in Gaza where these scarves are made has been destroyed. And when we talk about ethnic cleansing, you know, that gets thrown around like we all know what that means. What happened to the Native Americans in our continent was ethnic cleansing, the destruction of not only the massacre of human beings, but of the culture, of the language, of the art and craft, of the ability to make foods and baskets. And the Middle East is sometimes called the Fertile Crescent because so many of the foods that we eat today were originated in that part of the world. The Fertile Crescent that goes from Palestine through Syria, through Iran and Iraq, that had such a wonderful fertile soil, that people came there to invent agriculture and the herding of animals. And it's an ancient history, and it brings me such sadness that that part of the world has become a war zone for so many human beings. And right now, the small area of Gaza, it's not a very big area, right on the Mediterranean Sea, that had a population of over 2 million people, has been flattened. 2 million people in a small area. And it's been flattened. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann, for your comments.
It's tough. It's, but as well, if there were a way to orchestrate a multi-plank document of some sort at the county level, if you so choose. I mean, also, 5 to 9 million Darfur East Sudan refugees with nobody except possibly Doctors Without Borders on site in Darfur, helping in that tragedy as well. And we still haven't settled the Rohingya alienation in eastern India, with that Muslim population being kicked to the curb by the Indian and Burmese governments. But, oh, I'm Harry Boggs in District 4. Thank you. Home of where I live, at Lone Oak, which was a gig, I was going to, I was going to talk about this earlier, when there's more people, to thank Mr. Dent, because he was there at the dedication of Lone Oak in 2021. And there'll be another Lone Oak phase, I think, might be secret groundbreaking next year, next door, right? Great. It's a wonderful place. Come visit when you're in the neighborhood, okay? Oh, and this gentleman here, I have a feeling his team likely was responsible for helping the library system latch on to other library systems around the state and the West Coast, so that we can inter exchange all sorts of materials between our library in Santa Monica, San Diego, Santa Cruz, with a couple clicks of, right? And also, we get the free movies on Canopy, and we get to go something called After Hours Plus, which is vetted library users can come in after hours on their own, who've been carefully vetted and registered, to come use the library after hours with no library staff around, at two branches, at two branches. Check it out. And those two branches, as far as I was told by Betsy, one of the librarians, our library system is only, is one of how many in the country that have the open access program, so that people can go after hours? Only three library systems nationwide. Thank you for that. The other stuff I'll delay to another.
Thanks, Gary. Madam Clerk, are there any callers on the line?
Chair Bullock, we do have one caller.
Okay, let's bring them in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. This is Matthew Coulter calling in. I did want to say goodbye to Ed Schofield, that due to his restraining order put on me by the Board of Supes and him specifically, that was able to be brought up numerous times on other restraining orders for lesser parties. And the weaponization of government around the world has just completely run amok, including locally here in Grass Valley, California, Nevada City, California, Nevada County, California. It's sad to say that our taxes are being used to punish people that do nothing more than speak out, speak out about drones, bombs, misappropriation of taxes, corruption, hypocrisy. These things are endemic in our system, but also endemic in our system is the right to speak out against them peacefully, without being jumped on by every ounce of the county's money, because you guys have unlimited checkbook. So, I was in court on Friday, in court on Monday, both again, and it'll just go on and on. And well over a million dollars has been spent on me to do nothing more than silence my voice. And it's sad, but this is what's going on around the world, is that there's dying vestiges of the old guard that are kicking and screaming, going down. So, what can I say? I'm glad to see Ed go. He held up the marijuana thing with Dan Miller for many, many years, and I know he's changed his tune on that. That's great. But in the meantime, many families had to move out of the area and were destroyed by that mere holdup of that one issue. So, the things that you guys do on that diocese affect people lifelong. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Matt. Any other public comment here in the board chambers? No, no additional callers. We're going to go ahead and close public comments and move on. I thank you for, to everybody who came to talk to the board today. We appreciate your comments. We're going to move on to item number 41. Chief of Staff Jeffrey Thorsby. This is a resolution proclaiming December 14th, 2024 as Nevada County Toy Run Day. Thanks for your patience.
All right. Honorable Chair, members of the board, Jeff Thorsby, your Chief of Staff. I'm pleased to bring forward proclamation for Nevada County Toy Run Day. This is an amazing group of people that does amazing things for needing families, and this is an effort that they work throughout the year. And so, this will be the 33rd Annual Nevada County Toy Run. It will take place this Saturday on December 14th. And I'll let them kind of speak to about it. Maybe I'll go and turn it over to you.
Thanks, Chair Bullock, and members of the board. My name's Eric Oliver, President of Nevada County Toy Run. This is a longstanding event that helps out our community with families in need during the holidays. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board, County Nevada, for their continued support after 33 years of this event. The need is greater than ever. We have more families than ever before asking for help during the holidays, as well as the support from the community is greater than ever. So, we're able to keep up with those needs. I'd like to thank a few of our community partners and people that help out, Interfaith Food Ministry, Nevada County Food Bank, huge supporters. They provide all the sides to the meats that we provide to these families, so they can have a Christmas dinner. All the law enforcement agencies involved to help shut down the streets so that we can have the parade. It's, you know, a big part of this community's holiday season for years and years. The city of Grass Valley, Nevada City, as well as everybody at the county. I'd just really like to thank everybody. Thanks for having us again.
With, sorry, don't know how to push the buttons here, with the Nevada County Toy Run. And I just wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of the numbers that we're looking at this year. Last year, we did around 500 families, and the total number of kids served was just under 1,500. Today, currently, we have 660 families signed up, 1,900 children, and 80 families on a waitlist to come through the toy run. So, we have seen a huge increase this year. Most of those are Nevada County kids. There is a small portion of our group that comes from Placer County that is part of the Head Start Program, because we have a combined Head Start Program. As Eric was saying, you know, the community has really stepped up to help us this year, as well as, you know, all the different entities that we have to work with to make this happen. And I would like to say thank you as well. There's no way to put something like this on without the constant help from you guys, allowing us to use your parking lot out here, you know, is a huge thing, and just helping us to get the word out to everybody to help us. So.
Hi, my name's Edward Peavy. I want to thank the board for your continued contributions to us, helping us out through this. I want to thank the Fire Department and Cal Fire for helping us also, and just your continuing to support. Thank you.
We are kind of expecting some weather on Saturday. So, we have opened up the parking lot at the fairgrounds at Gate 1 to do an additional drive-through drop-off for toys this year. That's something that we've traditionally done, kind of on the down-low, just because we have certain, you know, certain groups that want to donate that can't be there the day of the toy run. But this year, we will have that staffed. Actually, we'll have people there from 9 to 6, accepting donations, so that we can help prepare for the amount of need that will be coming through. So, if you haven't had the opportunity to watch the toy run, I encourage you to, you know, go to one of these, either Grass Valley or Nevada City, and watch that. If you ever want to come and... If you ever want to come and, and watch the Parade of Bikers as they come through the building, just reach out to us and, you know, we'd love to have you. The bikes typically arrive there between about twelve, forty-five, and one o'clock. There's nothing like it. So it's a pretty incredible group.
Nice, thank you, thank you so much. And just to clarify, if somebody wanted to donate or contribute or help, where would they go to find the information on this?
NevadaCountyToyRun.com has pretty much all the information.
NevadaCountyToyRun.com, okay.
Yep, and we're looking for monetary help so that we can purchase food and toys for these families, as well as actual donations of toys and food, which can be dropped off at the fairgrounds from nine AM to six PM on Friday, as well as up until noon on Saturday before the bikes start coming in.
Okay.
So five hundred families will receive meats while they're there at the toy run, they'll leave with a turkey, a ham, or a chicken. Four hundred families will also leave with side bags and a ten-pound bag of potatoes. So that's part of what we raise money for, as well as the other food donations that come in. We do a couple of stuff, the buses, in conjunction with Head Start in Placer County, as well as Nevada County. And all the food that's donated is put together, and then the families are able to pick what they want to take from those tables. So it's a pretty great opportunity for them, and it's a great way for us to give back to the community.
Yeah, nice. Yeah, I was talking to somebody internally here, and we were describing a lot of the programs that people rely on for food during this period of time, whether it's school or after-school programs or other programs, or Meals on Wheels, may not be occurring during the holiday period, so I didn't know that that's one of the most important times for food insecurity, so you guys are doing great work. Thanks for your presentation today. I'll just turn it over to the board for any questions or comments. Supervisors, sort that.
So thank you for doing this. I think you said thirty-three years. I think I've probably been at at least thirty of them, just by virtue of having a business in downtown Grass Valley for so many years. And there are two events that happen in downtown Grass Valley that are the most heartwarming, generous things in our community. The Donation Day Parade, which is the following week, but the, your toy run is just amazing. It's amazing to see how many people get on their motorcycles and, or mopeds, or three-wheelers or whatever, and ride it, and then to see the people who show up, and hopefully, a lot of those people will go out to the fairgrounds and, you know, help volunteer and contribute. So thank you. I know when Tom Staser retired, we wondered if this was going to continue, and we're so grateful in the community that Shannon and the rest of you have taken it upon yourselves to continue this wonderful event. It's a rain-or-shine event, and I was always shocked to see how many people actually came when it was raining. And it was just, again, it just is heartwarming to watch all the work that you do. Do you have a, on your website, is there a way to donate, to contribute on the website, or just information on, do you have like a Venmo or a?
It's real easy on the website, it's just a Donate Now button.
Great.
And we have a charitable organization PayPal account, so we don't have to pay the taxes on it, so it's a great way to donate through there.
Good to know. Thank you so much. Thanks. I will see you on Saturday, either downtown Grass Valley or out at the fairgrounds.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Hall.
Yeah, just a, just a huge thank you for continuing this tradition and for adding the food. That's new, is it not?
So in the years that I've been participating in it, my daughter is thirty-four now, and we started when she was in eighth grade, they had some food, so mostly like turkeys, hams, and then the, just the miscellaneous canned good items. In the last probably six or seven years, we added the side bags that we work with IFM and the Food Bank to do.
Yep.
So we'll, our team will actually be packing those on Thursday at IFM, so we, we volunteer to help them with that.
Thank you so much for doing that, too. The need is, like you said, has gotten so great, and it's a great way to add that to the joyful gift pickups, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Supervisor Schofield.
Well, I apologize for you guys having to sit through so much of this morning's activity to get to this part of it, so we appreciate you being here. Shannon is a member of our Rotary Club that I belong to, so I have a little more inside information on this project than when Tom used to come here, it was just, yeah, this is really a great project. But spending more time with Shannon and getting a feel for really what is involved, there's like four people that's doing it, three of them are here, and the fourth one is Shannon's daughter, that do this, and it's pretty much, it's really amazing. And the number that Shannon gave to me was about twenty thousand dollars is what they have to raise to really make this work. And my thought was, wow, how much is actually going out in all the donations? I mean, it's just amazing. You could easily say five times, but probably more, probably more. The other thing that I, I don't know that I realized with Tom, I should have known this because I worked with him at the fairgrounds even, was it, this is in partnership with the Head Start program. So as a result, you do get some people from Placer County, but you also get people from the eastern end of this county, too. So it's not just people driving through and going to the fairgrounds. And some of those people include folks that might even live in Nevada, so that they're, but they're, you know how that works, hardy. So it's just, it's amazing what you guys are able to do. Just a thought, Allison, that if somehow we could become a sponsor of this, would be really great. You might just put that in the back of your mind, or Aaron, did Aaron leave? But I just wanted to thank all of you for the amount of time that you put into this project. It is amazing, and we'll be out there on Saturday, you know that. I think we're coming on Thursday to help with the IFM packing, too, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor Hook.
Yeah, just thank you. I, I mean, I think there was a time when Tom was gonna stop where it was iffy, and we were wondering what would happen, because it is a, it is a tradition in this community, and I can't say that I've made all thirty-three of them, but it is probably one of my most favorites, and I do appreciate it. I mean, through rate, there's nothing better than seeing a teddy bear on the back of a motorcycle, even when it's raining, with an umbrella, I have seen that. So you guys rock, that's really, and I didn't realize there was just the four of you working on this. So what a team, so hopefully.
There's other people behind the scenes, but, I mean, Eric stepped up when Tom was getting rid of it, you know, when he was really done with it, and pulled together a team, and we've been able to move mountains, so.
Yeah, incredible. So I would just encourage anybody out there to go to ToyRun.com, and it's not too late to make donations, so that would be great, and see you guys all on Saturday.
Yes, we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
It's been sad, but just a sincere thank you for the work you've done. I know I'm involved in other charitable pieces that occur year-round for that big day that happens, and so everybody sees that day, but they don't see the work behind it all year that you contribute and you contribute. So I just want to thank you for working behind the scenes. It's, it's very, I'm sure it's really rewarding to you, and it sure is to our community as well. With that, I'm gonna open up to public comment here in the board chambers. Anybody like to say a few words on the toy run? Seeing no comments calling in.
No callers, Chair.
No callers and no additional comments here, we'll close public.
I'd just like to say one last thing, just, I'd really like to thank all of the small businesses that support the toy run. Like you were saying, it, we have to raise between twenty and thirty thousand dollars each year to make this event possible, and we wouldn't be able to do that without all this support from the small businesses.
Yeah, great point. Thank you. Thanks to everybody who contributes out there who's not in the room today.
That, that's a really important thing right there, I just say, everyone's struggling right now. So there's nothing better than the support in your small businesses and local, and, you know, through this holiday season, I just say, congratulate you to all of them to still dig deep and give.
Right.
So as a community, let's all try and remember that as we do our shopping here, because it all comes back trifle to our families, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
Yeah, that's a great point. The kind of new way of shopping on, online, having stuff delivered is, is one way, but shop locally, buy locally, support locally. It's awesome. Great point. Seeing no additional public comment, I'll close public comment here, and once again, thank you and best of luck. I hope it's looking, I was just looking at the weather, it looks like maybe a little rain, but that's not the first time.
No, it's not. Well, it'll be okay.
Be safe. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Bullock, we are looking for a vote. It is a resolution.
Oh, thank you for pointing that out. I'll entertain your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District Two?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District One?
Yes.
District Five?
Yes. Thanks again.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item number forty-two. Office of Emergency Services Director Craig Griesbach, and this is a resolution adopting the twenty twenty-four Nevada County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Over to you, Director Griesbach.
Good morning, Chair Bullock, members of the board. Craig Griesbach, Director of Emergency Services for Nevada County. As your board knows, the importance of being strategic when preparing for and mitigating against the many threats that we face in our community cannot be understated. The plan that is being presented to you this morning enhances that ability for us to be strategic with our initiatives, priorities, and goals. The Hazard Mitigation Plan that is before you today takes a ten-thousand-foot level view, looking at the many hazards and risks that exist in our community. This plan supports our overall county's resiliency and creates a blueprint for reducing potential losses. So with that, it is my pleasure to introduce my partner in this effort, Paul Cummings, who's our program manager within our team in OES, but also leads and manages kind of this plan update effort. So really, to provide you with a brief overview of the strategic planning effort and answer any questions that you may have. Paul?
Thank you, Craig. Good morning, Chair Bullock and honorable board members. As Craig said, I'm Paul Cummings. I'm very excited today to bring before you this FEMA-approved twenty twenty-four County of Nevada Hazard Mitigation Plan. So these are the things we're gonna talk about. This'll be a short presentation today where we'll discuss the mandates for a local hazard mitigation plan. We'll talk about the planning process, which stakeholders that we collaborated with, some of which are in the room, our project timeline, our next steps and recommendations. So we'll begin the conversation with why do we need a plan? The Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand requires that each jurisdiction develop a hazard mitigation plan to receive future disaster mitigation funding following a disaster. The purpose of the DMA two thousand requirements is to encourage state and local governments to engage in systematic and nationally uniform planning efforts that will result in locally tailored programs and projects that help minimize loss of life, destruction of property, damage to the environment, and the total cost of disasters before they occur. Of note, a plan is also required to participate in many federal grant programs, such as the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The County of Nevada Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Update includes a mitigation strategy that provides our blueprint, as you heard Craig already say. Other benefits of a current local hazard mitigation plan, aside from an improved understanding of risks and vulnerabilities, would be an outline for sustainable actions that build resiliency and a measurable reduction in the negative impact of natural hazards, saving lives, reducing property damage, and speeding recovery efforts. The LHMP is also part of the roadmap to resilience. The roadmap consists of three core plans, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and an evacuation study. These planning efforts involve working closely with residents and community partners to ensure that the hazards we face are articulated accurately, that priorities are identified collaboratively, and that the resulting recommendations are actionable. So this slide shows the, the main players that were involved locally in the rewrite of this plan. Some of them are in the room, so I want to thank Greg Jones from the Nevada Irrigation District, Mike Stewart from the Town of Washington, Landon Hack from Cal Fire, and Chief Orion Clements from Grass Valley, and I think last but not least, but Mr. Bob Long from the Coalition of Firewise Communities. Many of these folks put in, volunteered their time, and came to be part of the planning effort, meeting with us periodically to work through the development of this robust plan. So on the left side, you can see our planning partners, and all of these, all of these planning partners, including Nevada Irrigation District, all ended up with an annex in the plan. So this was like a chapter at the end of the plan that focused on their jurisdiction, identified jurisdiction-specific hazards and mitigative actions. And they were individually funded by the Local Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to be part of the plan. On the right side, you'll see our steering committee, and these were people that we brought together. I know many of you recognize the organization names as key players in the community to make sure that our plan was robust, that we didn't miss anything, that it was inclusive, that we considered vulnerable populations, and, and the full spectrum of Nevada County residents were represented as we developed our plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about the role that the steering committee played a bit later. So this has been a very active eighteen-month planning process. It's taken up, like Craig said, a lot of my time and effort. I'm very proud of where we are now with the plan, and I think we have a solid plan that will launch us into the next five years. So the, these are the steps that we took as part of this planning process. We organized our resources, which is bringing people together around what we needed to do. We identified the hazards and performed risk assessment. And so the hazards, I'll just read off really quick, that we landed on as our hazards of concern, and these were quantitative hazards, so these were hazards that we could put numbers against, and that aligned with FEMA policy around repeatability and mitigation, were avalanche, dam failure, drought, earthquake, landslide, volcano, extreme cold, extreme heat, flood, hazardous materials release, wildfire, and winter storms. And I think we've seen many of these in our community, with the exception of the volcano eruption, fingers crossed that doesn't happen in our lifetime. We then figured out how we were gonna engage the public around this, because we didn't want to create this plan in a vacuum, and FEMA requires that we engage the public. So, and I'll talk about that in the next slide. We identified goals, objectives, capabilities, and actions, and the steering committee helped us create those, and then they, they voted on those, and then they also helped us pare down our list of identified hazards. So the steering committee had a really big role in identifying those hazards. We developed a plan for monitoring the plan, which basically means there's some instructions within the document that outline how we will make this a living document, and we will formally review the plan annually. We brought the plan together, it went through many iterations of internal and then community review, then was reviewed by the California Office of Emergency Services. There were some iterations back and forth there, and then it went on to FEMA, where they recently approved the plan. This slide just talks about our, or gets to our public outreach. Again, it was really important to our office and to the County of Nevada to make sure that we engage the public around this plan. We created a countywide public survey in both English and in Spanish, asking residents to share their greatest concerns around local hazards. We created a plan-focused website and shared numerous social media posts around our ongoing planning efforts. We did that through our wide reach of the County of Nevada's social media platform and Ready Nevada County. We opened the plan up to the public between August thirteenth and twenty-eighth of this year, receiving public inputs that were considered, integrated, and then the submissions were responded to. We printed off physical copies that were made available to the public for review as well. And then lastly, we asked our planning partners and steering committee members to share the plan with their stakeholders. Getting towards the end of the presentation here, we have this robust timeline that shows all the steps that were involved, the big chunks of working this plan through. I think what you can see, big picture, the last plan was adopted in twenty eighteen, September, and here we are again, December of twenty twenty-four, bringing this resolution to you today. It was around three years from the time that the plan, we applied for the plan in March of twenty twenty-one, until it's approved by FEMA now, so a very robust process. It's important to note that no funding was lost by the county or any of our partners, and that no existing grant programs were impacted by our timeline. So for next steps, once your board adopts the Hazard Mitigation Plan, our office will submit the numbered resolution to FEMA, completing the plan rewrite process. The eight annexes with the jurisdictions that we already mentioned are still with Cal OES, and once approved by the California Office of Emergency Services in FEMA, they'll be adopted by their respective jurisdictions. Those annexes are not tied to any current grant funding, by the way. Upon adoption and implementation, the plan will become a living document, where ongoing plan review and maintenance will take place. And lastly, plan, the plan was approved, if, you know, when approved this month, it will expire December of twenty twenty-nine, and so based on the timing of how long it took last time, we expect to submit for another Hazard Mitigation Grant Program round of funding to pay for the next round of planning in the year twenty twenty-seven. So that brings us to our recommendation. Our request is that your board adopt the twenty twenty-four County of Nevada Hazard Mitigation Plan, Volume One, and at this- And at this point, we'll open it up to your questions, sir.
Great, thank you. I know you compressed, excuse me, a lot of information into a small presentation, so I appreciate you being concise and delivering the information. We obviously had it in our board packet to read. Supervisor Hook, do you want to, or do you want to kick us off if you have any questions?
Um, I actually don't really have any questions. It was lengthy, it's a, it's big. So I know, you know, first everyone's complaining, how come we don't have it done? What's the timing? Why are we taking so long to do it? They ought to all sit down and read it, because it's a lot of pages, a lot of, some of the stuff was interesting to me, especially when we look at disasters and then, you know, you got, we haven't looked at it dialed in, but you have to, you have to make them look broader. You have to take in all of the possibilities. So I thought that was interesting. And I, so actually, I don't really have any questions. Just kudos that it's finished and that we can move on here and look for funding to start over again in 2027, which is ominous in its own self. And we hope that we keep learning and doing from this. And having the availability for grant funding is huge for this process, because we've seen what it's done in our county already. And it just shows you that sometimes a process does take a long time, and sometimes you just have to be patient and get it finished. So kudos to your team, because it's a lot of work. And thank you to the folks and the, that really all worked on this. If you look at how many people were involved, it's quite a number of agencies. And I see that the Fire Department folks are here, and I feel like they had a pretty good resolve over looking at that end of it, and that made me feel pretty real comfortable. So, good job. That's all I can say, good job.
Thank you. Supervisor Schofield?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. Lot of work that went into it, and I congratulate you guys, and I congratulate, in particular, all the partners that you've had in putting this together. Thank you.
Supervisor Hall?
I actually have some questions.
Okay. Supervisor Shortout, you want to go?
I do not have any questions, just, you know, I know there's a lot that goes into this, and I assume that this is a constantly evolving process as we wind our way through a really important topic. So thanks for all the hard work. Thanks to all the partners that collaborated and cooperated with you guys.
Yeah, so thank you. This is a great plan. It's robust. It's filled with a ton of good information. I did, I did not realize there were that many annexes. I didn't see the annexes, but I did read through, I skipped through parts of it, but I read through some of the other. And I do have a couple of questions. So first, I noticed that in the agricultural section, there was no mention of cannabis. And I'm assuming that's because it's going to FEMA and it's not federally legal, and so we don't want to incorporate it. So if that's the case, could you let me know that? And then, first of all, that's why we're doing it. Secondly, is there somewhere else we're acknowledging that when there is a disaster, we want, we need to incorporate relief for our cannabis farmers as well? Is there another document or another way we can acknowledge that?
So Supervisor, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you a reason why, other than all of these efforts align with a state and federal hazard mitigation planning, and I would assume, based on the classification of cannabis at the federal level, it's not acknowledged necessarily in these planning efforts, but this is, that's good feedback for us to know.
And I'll also add Supervisor, the plan addresses impacts to agriculture in general. I mean, I think they did call out some of them, so I don't think it was necessarily overtly eliminated, but I can check into that and get back to you.
Right.
I think the plan is mainly looking at, like, how could a weather event impact ag in general, like props, not specific?
Okay, yeah, and understand that you're wanting to align it with the state, so just maybe making a note that we want to make sure that, that group of our ag is not, you know, left out somehow, just because we can't call it out in this plan necessarily. And then I had a question about, under hazardous material, you did mention the trains and the spills that could happen on the freeway. And I'd heard, Hardy, I don't know if you've, this is more your issue, but that there was some real concern about hazardous spills in the town of Truckee itself, and I don't know that that was called out very much. And so just wondering if there's any discussion on that.
Yes ma'am. The, the, the Volume One was more of the broad plan, and then the annexes would have drilled down into those jurisdictional-specific hazards. We didn't bring those annexes to you because they're still with CAL OES under review. And also, our board, under this circumstance, doesn't necessarily need to adopt the annexes. Each jurisdiction will actually adopt their own annex. So the town of Truckee likely address those within their annex. I know that James Blattler up there was working very closely with the Tetra Tech contractor in CAL OES and FEMA.
Okay, great. That's helpful, yeah, these annexes, it'll be interesting to see what's in them. And then the last issue I had, and I raised, we had some email interchange yesterday and today about the fact that we aren't calling out abandoned mines in this plan. And Craig, I appreciate your really thorough explanation about how we're wanting to align this plan to the state plan, that the purpose, I'm guessing, is really to be, so that we can more quickly and clearly apply for the funds to address anything that happens under this plan, and that abandoned mines is not going to be a national issue necessarily. So I, I think if I'm understanding correct, that's what I, that I understood, but I still feel like you did use the words sort of locally adapted, that these plans are supposed to be locally adapted. And I feel like volcanoes probably shouldn't be in there if we're locally adapting it, and that abandoned mines maybe should be. And, you know, I saw, like, the Sierra Fund wasn't one of the member, community members that we talked to, and that might be useful to talk to them, as well as sort of the state and federal mining agencies that oversee all this. So it's a, it's like a big topic. Obviously, you're not going to change anything in this plan, but I'd love to hear your comments about that, and then also, maybe my colleagues, I feel like I would want to ask that we maybe include that in the next one. I, I do think it's sort of a little bit unique to California, very much unique to the motherlode counties, and so maybe they wouldn't envision that in a more generic plan, but I feel like it's our responsibility to, for the future, our future residents, to make it clear that we're aware that this is a safety and hazardous issue in this, in the county, and someday, some years, with some money, we may be starting to do more to address some of those.
Supervisor Hall, this is great feedback for us as we kind of mature this living document, and as we communicated a little bit offline. Essentially, we're aligning those efforts, as you mentioned, with the state and federal planning efforts, and essentially, mines fall into two distinct categories, whether it's hard rock mines or hydraulic mining. And so really, how do, how do those relate to the hazards? So like, subsidence of soil and hazardous materials and things like that, so it falls into those categories, and that's how it's analyzed in this plan and at the state and federal level. In addition to that, the pre-utility and vehicle of funding that would come and requests through federal government for mitigation funding, most of our mines are on federal land, meaning we couldn't spend that money on federal property. So there's that aspect of it as well, but again, this is great feedback for us. As we mature the plan, we convene our stakeholders annually to maintain the plan, and we continue the conversation. And Paul, I don't know if you have anything to add?
And, and I will add Supervisor, I remember, I think when we came to you, maybe it was with the grant funds acceptance, you charged us with, let's look into mines, and I definitely, we carried that water as we went to our contractors and our Steering Committee. The Steering Committee, all being, you know, residents and active nonprofit organizations in our community, did consider it, we talked about it, but again, working with the contractor, the contractor educated us on the framework and structure of this federal plan, that it was best to include those as the secondary effects, not as a primary threat, if that makes sense, that it's still acknowledged, but we really focused on the landslide and subsidence piece of it, and then also the hazardous materials element of it that could come from it. So we've definitely learned a lot, though, and like we said, this is a living plan, and we should consider, you know, take your, your feedback in as we continue to develop this plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I do appreciate the nuances of trying to fit it in this template and, and I did see what the email that you sent me, Craig, did explain very clearly where it, where that, as a disaster, a potential disaster that is included in there, it's just not called out very clearly. It's hard to find, it's actually not really even named. And so I would just hope we could do something more to just be more, to acknowledge it a little bit more somehow in the future. I mean, I do think it would, it'll take one disaster, one person falling into a mine, and people are going to ask, oh, what's the county doing about it, and why isn't there a plan, or why isn't it acknowledged? So I just would ask my colleagues to join me in wanting a little more clarity on that. But I appreciate how you did incorporate it, and as a whole, I think the plan is really great, and really good work on that, I think.
Yeah, the, on the mine piece, having visited the Blue Lead Mine was really hit at home, because there, I think there are, I don't know, six or seven areas of entrance that are just open mine shafts, it's within this private property, obviously it's private property, and you shouldn't be wandering around there in concept, but there, there is a, when you go out there, you realize, and when you fly over Nevada County, you can see just massive mining landscapes, so interesting concept there. And Supervisor Hall, I just wanted to touch on the Truckee Fire Protection District piece. It is interesting, because Truckee Fire Protection District rolled back their hazmat response team that they had for many years, and so I've talked to Amy Orani at points about what that means for the county, because we, as a county, we are responsible for hazardous material cleanup and response and handling, so it's interesting that that's coming up again. And I did have a meeting with Truckee Fire Protection District a couple of weeks ago and asked them specifically, they've got mutual aid agreements with Reno, and then also on the side, as you know, but it's being handled from Truckee's perspective, but because of the railway, it offers kind of a unique vector for those really big problematic spills, because we saw what happened, I think it was in Ohio a couple of years ago. There's a lot of stuff that transients through Truckee, right in the middle of town, so that's another interesting concept you brought up. I did have a few questions, just, I think primarily, could you just update us on the, the other, I know the, this is part of a compendium of other plans, and the evacuation study is complete, but then maybe a little bit about the CWPP and where they, how they fit together, and when they're going to be kind of sewn together?
Yeah, I'll take a stab at that, Chair Bullock. So our Community Wildfire Protection Plan will be presented to your board, both highlighted at your workshop, but also bringing it to your board more formally in the first couple of months of the next year. So essentially, it will be out for public review. It might actually be out right now. It'll be released essentially for a thirty-day public comment period. So we have a draft that's been reviewed with stakeholders. Again, that has been a very intense community engagement effort, but we hope to roll that out, and that's kind of the, one of the final pieces of our roadmap to resilience as we wrap this up, as we finish our evacuation study earlier this year. We'll be adopting this plan hopefully today, and then our Community Wildfire Protection Plan will kind of round it out. So that's a general update on where we're at and where you'll hear more moving forward.
And I'll just jump in and add Supervisor, that, as you know, the, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan was kind of that big broad brush covering all hazards countywide. Community Wildfire Protection Plan was really getting after the wildfire element, and it's great, because in the planning process for both of them, running in parallel, they were complementary. So we were able to take some of the work that we did with the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, like the wildfire risk analysis, and pull it into our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. And then drilling down even further under wildfire, you had that evacuation element that's so important in our recently completed plan, so they, they stitch together and they're kind of tiered and complementary, so that's a great question.
Yeah, thank you. In the, in February, I think was the evacuation study, and that's on our website. You can use your, all those different tools that you've assembled there, so nice, thanks for the summary. And then I was just going to mention briefly, just kind of, you know, other comment, but at the state, and we all work in different levels of the state and federal, but a lot of the funding coming down, and some of the grant funding we've pulled down, is really closely tied to these plans, right? And so obviously, sustainability comes in back to this and these plans, allowing us to pull down, I think, last figure I saw was seventeen million dollars, we've pulled down for some of the priorities here locally based on these plans. And just touching on that, you said, we, we didn't necessarily skip over, miss, or somehow lose funding based on the plan's gap period of about a year. That didn't happen?
Correct. The existing grant awards, we continued to receive those, and then any plans that were currently under FEMA review, we filed a letter of extenuating circumstances to continue them through that review process. And then back to the planning as well, that the Nevada Uboplaster Unit Plan, CWPP, LHMP, try to say the same thing and get after the same projects, so that they complement each other as we do go after those grants that you just mentioned. That way, we're showing our alignment as a community as we pursue those funds.
Nice, thank you. Yeah, no other questions from me? Any question, additional questions from the board? I've seen none. Thanks for the presentation. We'll open it up for public comment. And once I just mentioned, thanks again to the partners, Mike, you, and CAL FIRE, and others who have come together to help assemble the plan. We understand it takes a lot of work in the background. We appreciate it. We'll open it up for public comment. Anybody in the board chambers like to talk about the good work that's been presented here today? Nope? Madam Clerk, any callers on the line?
No callers, Chair.
No callers? Okay. I think that concludes it. We will close public comment. I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no additional comments, I would entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second?
Motion to second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District two.
Yes.
District four.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
District one.
Yes.
District five.
Yes. Congratulations. Job well done. Thank you. I think we are just about slightly ahead of schedule, and we have a little bit of time carved out for announcements. I just had one really quick, but I just wanted to offer the board an opportunity to do announcements, and then we'll go into closed session. So anybody like to kick us off with announcements today? Supervisor Hall?
Thank you. Yep, let's see, I'll start at the bottom. Some regular Capitol Project Subcommittee and Budget Subcommittee meetings. The Courthouse Steering Committee met again, so we're staying, you know, thanks to Tricia's great leadership. We're staying very active and making sure we're providing input, and making sure the outreach that needs to get done is getting done, and we're seeing some very interesting results come back from the consultants, so very, it's a, I think that's been a really good process. I did also visit the Western Sierra Nevada Medical Clinic. I think the CEO has reached out for us to do a tour. Pretty impressive how much they offer in one building, especially for low-income folks, but also if you can't pay, they have to take you in. They're a federally accredited institution. They provide right there on the spot, the urgent care.
So Chair Bullock, we are having a LARDIS, so security guard, I'd like you to close and lock those building, those doors. It's at Crown Point. I apologize. It's at Crown Point.
Okay, thanks for witnessing, now.
Okay. Best wishes. Should I continue? Okay. So the medical facility provides pediatric care, adult care, urgent care, and relieves the hospital of some of those visits. So I'd recommend to my colleagues, if they get a call, to go take a look at that. Yeah, it's very interesting. Then, let's see, the Sierra, I'll see, I'll skip some of those calls. Lastly, I'll mention that I went on a NACO-sponsored regional meeting in Sonoma last week, which was, turned out to be incredibly good. We visited, the whole thing was tours with speakers. We visited different parts of Sonoma County, so we looked at ag, ag issues with the wine industry. We looked at remote communities issues like broadband along this, like the Bodega Bay, the coast, exactly the same issues we have here. So very interesting just for us to share information on how we're handling those. And then finally, we did a tour of the Tubbs Fire location, the Coffee Park, which has been completely rebuilt, and had folks stationed there telling us what they learned. So on the bus tour, their OES was very open about indicating everything that they did wrong, and I took a lot of notes, and we'll share that with our OES folks and each of you, if you'd like. And then we had people stationed there, and one woman I spoke with talked about bringing in contractors and dealing with insurance issues, lots and lots of lessons learned about avoiding grifters and scam artists wanting to rebuild, and then also understanding what you have as an insurance coverage in terms of what will get paid out. So they've done an incredible job of rebuilding out there, including upgrading their codes for the rebuilding, finding funding, finding assistance, and it was just a really educational tour, and I'll be sharing what I learned. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Elway, can we have Gary maybe do his business after the board's concluded here? You all sat there, Gary?
Something is distracting.
Thank you. Supervisor Shortout? Supervisor Sorthout?
Thanks, just real quick. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving, State Treasurer Fiona Ma was in Grass Valley, so I had the opportunity to attend a luncheon for her and tour around a little bit. She toured downtown Grass Valley, downtown Nevada City. I believe she went to the Foundry and to the Nevada Theater. And I think her final stop was out at the Curious Forge. And it was very interesting to talk to her and realize how many departments she has under her department and how much work she does. She did, she did a short visit to Provisions, the cannabis dispensary in Grass Valley. She's been working really hard in California to try and get banking for legalized for cannabis businesses. So it was interesting to hear her take on that. We had an ad hoc housing committee meeting last week, and I think we're going to be bringing some exciting things forward in January to the board workshop. That's my computer. Yeah. It's all clear, okay. Oh, there we go. I also attended the CCC meeting at Supervisor's Bullock invitation. It was very interesting to see how well organized they are on these issues, on the housing issues in particular, up in the Truckee Tahoe area. And there's a lot of resources up there going towards finding housing solutions for the community. And then it's just been a series of holiday mixers for all the different organizations. I attended the Grass Valley Downtown Association Holiday Mixer last week, and then the Nevada County Contractors Association, a lot of county employees there, which is really nice to see. And then last night was the Bright Futures for Youth Holiday Event. They did a great presentation on all the work that they're doing with Bright Futures, especially around teen mental health issues. I also had my update with the CDA last week, which was really great and informative. It's amazing how much and how many people can sit around the table and then pack information into one hour. We could have probably spent four hours in there, but really appreciative to Tricia for having us come in a couple of times a year to understand what's going on in their world, so. And then also, I just want to say, this is, I believe, our last meeting of the year, and just wish everybody a really happy holiday season. And to echo Supervisor's Hook's comments, if you have Christmas shopping or gift shopping to do, there's a lot of great stores in Nevada County, both eastern and western, and if you can keep your money at home, it really does a lot. Having attended all those nonprofit groups, holiday mixers, and you see the support from the community, that, you know, 80 to 90% of the money that they raise all comes from our local businesses, our local people here. So the more we can do locally and keep our dollars circulating around Nevada County, the better off we are as a community.
Yeah, great point. Supervisor Schofield?
Well, things have been kind of tapering down for me. I've pretty much finished most of my committee assignments. I did attend my last ERC meeting last Thursday, but I think a lot of people feel I left office a while back, because I'm not really getting many phone calls either, so that's fine. I do want to let everybody know that I do have a reception this evening from 4:00 to 5:30 at down at the Bear River Library, a project that we're very, very proud of. And thanks for Penn Valley's lead on that, very much like the two, the two libraries are very similar. I will be here on the 18th with the Grass Valley Male Voice Choir, so we'd love to see you out in the facilities. And I'm now singing with the Grass Valley Cornish Carole Choir also, so Friday nights down at the Cornish Christmas also. And I just want to reiterate, it has been a real pleasure working with you guys, and we really are a good team. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor and Supervisor Hook.
See, where are we here? So just a little busy week. Actually, I've had a lot of constituent conversations, just different meetings over time. Just kind of been interesting little things, whether it's planning or questions about how we move forward. I got to send some people over to Economic Development, so it's kind of exciting to see those kinds of, those movements happening in my district. Let's see, went to Mike Dent's little thing that was fun. I went to a meeting about Sierra foothills. They're going to do a cougar study and it's going to incorporate some of all of this, the Sierra Nevadas. It was a really interesting conversation. And there'll be more to come with that through our agricultural department. I had a Mountain Counties Water Board meeting, lots of good things happening there, especially with our work being done to educate legislators on what's happening with the water and what our watershed does. Looking forward to keep working on that team. I went to Contractor Association, again, that was really nice. CDA mid-year, I would echo Lisa on that. It was a great opportunity to sit and visit about what's going on in my district specifically, but I could have taken, that hour went by so fast. So, but it does give me more opportunities. We do have a lot of offline conversations, and I got to thank all of the staff that makes time for all of our questions that we have. I think those are really important. I had a meeting with Oprah Hill. They're going to do some chainsaw training out on our ranch, and that was interesting to see how that incorporates and the work that goes into being prepared for fire season that comes. And I think that's all I could think of. Oh, no, what am I thinking? Went to the Penn Valley Christmas breakfast, and that was really exciting. So they invited me to come to their badge pinning and breakfast, and it was a lot of fun. There was all the promotions that were done in Penn Valley, in the fire department, long time coming, and a great crew there. And then they got a call, so half of them had to leave, but isn't that what they do for a living? We're all so lucky to have them in service in our, in our district for certain. And I did go to Lake Wildwood. They had a women's concert, and I did make it to that. It was, it was a lot of fun to see a lot of different folks down in Lake Wildwood, all out enjoying the moment. A lot of construction going on down there right now with the new, new building that they're putting in for maintenance building. And I made an appointment, I'm going to sit down and visit. They don't have a new general manager yet, but they're, they're in search of one. So lots going on at Lake Wildwood.
That's about it.
A lot going on. I'm going to touch on some stuff real quick, and then I wanted to pass along some information I just got. I've been conducting stakeholder meetings when my voice held out. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. I couldn't speak, so you can save you guys a lot of time listening to me talk. But we have had stakeholder meetings. I think we're, gosh, we've done 18 of them or 19 of them, and I think we have eight more on Thursday. It's like the most awesome thing to sit down and just listen carefully to people, you know, stakeholders in Eastern County. And so I'm getting a lot of information that I collect there. So anyway, we're doing that, completing that on Thursday. And then I as well went to the Sierra Western Medical Clinic and learned a lot about their, their piece and what they're doing, and ran into Scott Kellerman there and talked to him. He's on the board, so I got an update from him. It was really a pleasure to talk with him. Supervisor Schofield and I had an AQMD meeting where we awarded some grants, and I think we were a recipient of, Nevada County was a recipient to one of the AQMD grants. We had our housing ad hoc, and then I had a tribal, a NACO Tribal Affairs Committee, which was really, really great. It was, I learned a lot, and it's really fun to see tribal members that are contributing to that community from other states. So I'm newer to NACO, so understanding how we can fit in, and we have several tribes here that I'm looking forward to maybe working with. And I plan to bring some information. I know you've done some work in there too, Supervisor Hall, maybe meeting with you and trying to bring some information for us for our workshop, just under the board member announcements part. We had our CCC meeting. It was on Eastern County housing, so that was good. Tyler joined Supervisor Sorthout, and then a number of different Christmas parties. I think the most remarkable one was the Truckee River Watershed Council, which Lisa Wallace is retiring. If anybody knows Lisa, she's been an absolute powerhouse. And she kind of single-handedly did restoration in the entire Truckee River watershed area. So all over town, if you look, there's green meadows with bubbling brooks and clean water. And it's really cool. She's just done an amazing job and considered kind of one of the best in the business. So she's going to be replaced by somebody named Michelle Pressowitz, who's been there for years, and she's also a climate scientist and just an amazing person. So it was touching to see her and her legacy there, was so kind of tangible remediation of that place that we know and love. It's really cool. And then I was going to mention, our Truckee Tahoe Homeless Advisory Committee has concluded its work in Eastern County. That was a 14-month committee I sat on, and it was a consortium of a bunch of people, North Tahoe Homeless Services, and then also the town of Truckee, and a bunch of other, the hospital and others. And so we have a draft report out, and I just wanted to make everybody aware that it highlights some of the needs and also some of the deficiencies in Eastern County at the county level and also cities, towns, and community stakeholders on what we can do to kind of fill the gap up there. So I think Ryan and Allison are going to prepare a board memo that basically describes that plan. It is in draft format, but I wanted to hopefully get you the draft format piece in advance of the workshop, because as we talk about homelessness and homeless infrastructure countywide, I just wanted you to have that plan, even though it is draft, so we can make additional comments on it and then get your feedback. I just want to hear from my colleagues on the board about what your thoughts are. And Ryan, I just will note that he and Jasmine Bro have both been incredibly helpful in that process. They also sit on T-HAC, so when you're in those meetings, you have a resident expert weighing in. But there is a lot of, a lot of need and a lot of programs that we're tilting up kind of as an emergency response of sorts, but not necessarily any infrastructure. So we don't have a physical place for homeless orientation or day services or warming shelters or anything. I mean, we're kind of basically just catch as catch can. So I'm anxious to bring that information forward to you, so you'll see a memo from Ryan on that. And with that, I would just kind of echo the comments. It's the end of the year, and I wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Enjoy it and spend lots of time with your family. And Ed, I know you're going to take full advantage of that in January. Looking forward to you doing something fun. I think with that, we are going to, unless there's anybody have any other announcements they forgot about? Okay. We're going to move on to our closed session and open up, you want to read us in and then we'll call for public comment on that?
Yes, thank you Chair Bullock. So pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.94, I'm requesting a closed session to determine whether litigation should be initiated in one matter.
Thank you. We'll open up public comments on the closed session items. Seeing nobody here, and Madam Clerk, anybody on the phone?
No callers.
And this is my last meeting as chair or close to it, and that's the first time I've actually done that right, I think. Yeah. Okay, thanks. We'll see you back here after lunch.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. It's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my room. There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone, and having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything, but really we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. It's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise, and first the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk, so on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace Nixle and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really, what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really, anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That could be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. I picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how, if it wasn't for my neighbor, who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to "go" when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be you.
Okay, welcome back. Back to our regular meeting, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Elliott to read us out of a closed session. Oh, Trevor, thank you. Sorry, should have looked over there first.
Closed session occurred wherein the board provided advice to county council and direction.
Thanks, Trevor. Moving on, scheduled item number 44, Building Director George Shurick is a publicarian to consider the adoption of an ordinance, stat. Chapter 17 to Title 14 of the Nevada County Code regarding regulations for limited-density owner-built rural dwellings for a national three-year pilot program. And introduce way for the reading and adopt the ordinance, adding the said chapter to the Nevada County Code of Regulation. With that, we'll turn it over to George. Take it away.
Thank you, Chair Bullock and the rest of the board. Thank you for having us here. I'm accompanied by Supervising Plans Examiner Nick Burney to give the Title 25 ruling dwellings a presentation today. Okay, today, our presentation will focus on what is Title 25. We'll also give a history of Title 25. And then we'll talk about why Title 25. Then we'll compare Title 25 to Title 24. Then we'll talk about the life, health, and safety aspects of Title 25. And we'll also talk about unpermitted structures under Title 25. And then we'll look at potential cost savings as well. So what is Title 25? The California Code of Regulations includes Title 25, which covers housing and community development offering alternative construction standards for limited-density owner-built rural dwellings. It aims to protect the life, health, and safety of the public and occupants while allowing flexibility for creative and cost-effective solutions that may not align with traditional building codes. The code supports alternative materials, methods, and designs as long as they meet basic safety and functionality requirements. Recognizing the diversity in construction practices and materials, this allows for creative and innovative solutions. Let's talk about the definitions. What is a limited-density rural dwelling? That is any structure consisting of one or more habitable rooms intended to be occupied by one family with facilities for living and sleeping with use restricted to rural areas by zoning designations. This shall include primary dwellings and accessory dwelling units. What do we mean by owner-built? Constructed by any person or family who acts as the general contractor for or the provider of part or all the labor necessary to build housing to be occupied as the principal residence of that person or family and not intended for sale, lease, rent, or employee occupancy. Okay? If adopted, Title 25 rural dwellings would be limited to a few zoned areas in unincorporated Nevada County, and the Nevada County Building Department would be the authority for permitting and inspecting these dwellings. I'll give you a little bit of background on the history here in Nevada County of Title 25 rural dwellings. Originally adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 1999, this ordinance provided an alternative path for rural residential construction. Over its roughly 17-year span to 2016, there were 70 applications for rural dwellings at the Building Department, of which 55 were completed, showing only moderate engagement. By 2016, interest seemed to decline, leading to the discontinuance of this ordinance. Over recent years, Nevada County's housing needs and rising construction costs have sparked renewed interest in the alternative housing initiative. So at the Board of Supervisors workshop last January, the Building Department was directed to explore the potential revival of the Title 25 ordinance. The updated proposal focuses on maintaining safety while addressing the current housing shortage, escalating housing costs, and the need for flexibility for both homeowners and the Building Department. Why Title 25? As widely recognized, the nation, California, and Nevada County all face a severe housing shortage. In response, Nevada County has developed a pro-housing initiative. Recently, the Planning Department introduced a tiny Homes on Wheels ordinance, which is set to go before the board in January. Over the last several years, the Health and Human Services Agency has supported residents in securing housing options for homes to apartments and condos. Furthermore, several county committees are actively pursuing additional strategies to increase the availability of affordable and workforce housing. The proposed rural dwelling ordinance, if approved, would provide another critical tool for both the county and residents to address housing needs. This ordinance aims to reduce barriers to achieve basic code compliance, helping individuals who face financial and logistical challenges in meeting current state building standards. For many, these requirements create a significant hurdle, and this ordinance is intended to help ease that burden. For instance, California currently mandates that new homes be pre-wired for an all-electric future, requiring electric wiring even if the homeowner opts for gas appliances. This adds potential thousands of dollars to the construction budget of new residences. Additionally, another recent code requirement is the installation of dimmer switches and light controls to reduce power consumption throughout new construction. However, this also raises costs about $40 per dimmer versus $5 for a standard switch. The proposed ordinance would help alleviate some of these financial and regulatory pressures by providing a more flexible framework, yet it would rely on the Building Department inspections to ensure that critical safety standards are met. So let's talk about the difference in Title 25 versus Title 24. Title 24 is also known as the California Building Standards and is a set of regulations that govern the structural safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability of new buildings. It includes basically two parts, the Energy Code and the California Green Building Standard. Title 24 is also very much driven by life, health, and safety standards and is updated every three years by the state. To be clear, adopting the proposed ordinance will not compromise safety standards. The inspection process will cover structural integrity, mechanical systems, electrical and plumbing work, environmental health codes, and fire safety requirements. Any work completed on a new Title 25 structure must comply with current California codes. However, the scope of required work may be reduced. For example, if only one receptacle is desired in a bedroom rather than one on each wall, it would be permitted. But that receptacle must meet current state electrical requirements. With the reduction of the scope of work required, this would allow the homeowner building flexibility. A homeowner would potentially be able to invest more money on exterior fire hardening instead of electrical receptacles behind a sofa that would never be used. In many instances, these options would translate into less cost to the buyer. Okay, we're going to talk about the permitting process. This would follow a process similar to current building standards. Let's talk about the proposed ordinance. There would be some cost savings with the Title 25 compared to traditional residential construction permitting. However, there are many fees within the building permit that this ordinance cannot waive or make disappear. There will still be impact fees for the appropriate school districts, recreation districts, traffic mitigation, and others. Also, there will continue to be fees associated with staff time to review the project. However, there will be less costs connected to building inspections. Currently, there are 12 inspections required for new residential construction. Under this ordinance, only four inspections would be required. That would equate to an approximately $1,500 savings for the building permit. What would be needed to the application process? The general description of the structure would include mechanical installations, clearances, setbacks, ventilation, plumbing, electric, foundation, and structural. You would not need a design professional to make these plans if you did not desire. That would be another cost savings if you did not hire an engineer or an architect for these plans. The floor plan would identify room use, door and window locations. Dwellings under ordinance would be limited to one story unless engineered plans were brought forward. Structure elevation drawings would be required. The drawings would include materials and construction methods The drawings would include materials and construction methods for exterior wildlife exposure, foundation plans, new footing details, manufactured truss calculations if needed above thirty-two hundred feet for snow load requirements. Parcels above thirty-two hundred feet would need those. There also would not be requirements for room dimensions, so if you wanted to put a four-by-six bedroom, you could do that, where today the requirements are a hundred square feet. So there's a lot of different flexibility here for the homeowner that would reduce Also, let me be clear, a well and a septic system would be necessary to be approved by the Environmental Health Department. The parcel would need to be of sufficient size and configuration to fulfill the sewage disposal system setbacks to all property lines and other setbacks established by law. These requirements would not change under Title twenty-five. Also, the application plans and other data filled out by the applicant must be clear stating that this is a Title twenty-five limited-density owner-built rural dwelling structure, and shall be reviewed by the Planning Department to verify compliance with the provisions of this ordinance. Prior to issuance of the permit of this rural dwelling, the owner of the parcel will be required to record a notice regarding that this structure will be built to Title twenty-five standards rather than Title twenty-four standards for real estate disclosure purposes only. Okay, let's talk about the building codes. Under this ordinance, dwellings must conform to the universally accepted principles relating to design, structure, materials, and methods of construction. Also, under this ordinance, the construction of a rural dwelling would be a privilege, not a right. The building official or designee would have full authority and interpretation and application of the provisions of this ordinance. This would include determining eligibility of a dwelling proposed to be constructed in applicable building standards for such proposed dwelling. This is to prioritize life, health, and safety. Let's talk about some definition. What is a sound structure? This is a structure which is stable in a strong state with no significant defects that would compromise its ability withstand normal loads and environmental pressures. The foundations would have no visible cracks, the walls would have no visible cracks, and the ceiling would have no visible cracks. The walls, the corners, and right angles would line up properly, no buckling walls, no leaning walls. Proper door and window alignment should be level with the floor and wall, no buckling of windows, no broken windows. The walls and ceilings should not be sagging or buckling, no buckling on the roofs and no sagging roofs. The floors should be level without slopes, and there should be no moisture or mildew to indicate structural and health issues in the structure. So what does this mean? It means you can have uncommon foundations, pure foundations, stone masonry footings, and foundation, pressure-treated lumber, poles or equivalent foundation materials or designs may be used. The plumbing requirements, they must have a bathroom with a toilet, a sink, and a tub and/or shower. They must have cold and hot running water. Talk about the electrical requirements. If you are not aware, the Nevada County Building Department currently allows the use of off-grid solar systems to provide electric for all types of properties and structures. This would not change under Title twenty-five. Any off-grid solar system does require professional engineering and electric load calculations. For those that are interested, there's a handout available on the Building Department website. Where conventional plumbing and electrical are installed, it would be required to meet current plumbing and electrical codes. However, alternative methods and designs which comply with the intent of the code would also be permitted on a case-by-case basis. HVAC requirements, a heating source would be required to be installed. Fireplaces, heating appliances, and gas piping would need to be installed, invented according to the manufacturer's recommendations. Other materials and methods of venting which comply with the intent of the code could also be permitted. The use of non-reviewable fuels like liquid propane or natural gas, fireplaces or solar heating devices would be allowed, however, no space heaters would be considered your source of heat. Minimum R-value insulation standards in walls and attics would need to be met to ensure energy efficiencies. There would be no specific requirement for heating capacity for temperatures in all the rooms, however. Health requirements must include natural light and proper ventilation. These are required to maintain good indoor air quality, promote occupant health and well-being, regulate temperatures and humidity, must have a connection to the sewer and septic as part of those health requirements. Potable water would be required, although it need not be pressurized. An alternative to a well would be a two-hundred-and-fifty-gallon tank system. As mentioned earlier, four inspections would be conducted by the Building Department. One would be a foundation inspection prior to placement of concrete, or concrete slab, or underfloor inspection and proper setbacks. Then a roof sheathing and shear inspection would be there to ensure the roof and its supporting structures are properly installed. A rough framing, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical inspection would be needed prior to covering of the walls, and then a final inspection would be conducted after the construction is complete and ready for occupancy. Please note, other inspections may need to be necessary by local fire agency, environmental health, or other departments. Let's get into the fire requirements. Title twenty-five rural dwellings are not exempt for WUI standards. Wildland urban interface mandates non-combustible materials such as Class-A roof assemblies and shingles and cement-based siding. Emergency access for driveways, roads, vegetation management, and defensible space around the dwelling would be required. Alternative methods and designs would comply with the intent of the code and could be permitted. On the interior of the dwelling, smoke detectors would be mandatory. As for sprinklers, they would be required for dwellings over twelve hundred square feet. Dwellings under twelve hundred square feet would not be required for sprinklers, but they would be highly encouraged. So this is just for specific zoning areas of the county and unincorporated Nevada County. These areas would be legal parcels in the unincorporated area that are designated as rural. These designations are generally intended to provide for residential development in a rural setting. Most of these designations are for agricultural operations, supporting agricultural production, or natural resource production and management. Typically, this equates to parcels from five to a hundred and sixty acres. Zoning designations are proposed as residential agriculture, general agricultural, exclusive agricultural, forest, and timberland production zones. These would be the only areas that would be allowed to build a Title twenty-five rural dwelling. I'm sorry.
So which, what color? I mean, what's designated it? I see it says one-three-four, but what's...
We'll take questions afterwards if you don't mind. Is that okay?
No, this...
Well, my district goes on.
George, let the chair go ahead and facilitate the questions with the board members, please.
Yeah, George, we'll kind of understand. Are those zoning districts?
Yeah, those are just supervisor zoning districts, so that map does not equate to agriculture zoning districts. That was just a map of the county.
I see.
Well, yeah.
I'm just saying, my district goes...
District four, why is there two colors there?
Mine goes all the way north Samuan, so I just was asking why.
Well, there is, but it's two colors.
Yeah, I just was asking.
Okay.
I'll wait till the question, sorry.
Thank you.
He's waiting for direction from you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay, today, now we're going to talk about the owner flexibility. This code offers a flexible approach to residential construction tailored to support non-standard owner-built homes. It encourages innovative engineering and methods and materials, making it ideal for residents looking for sustainable, affordable, and creative housing solutions. Some of the key features of this are innovative engineering, which enables owners to use creative design and construction practices, allowing for buildings that do not strictly adhere to conventional codes but still meet essential standards. That includes alternative methods and materials of construction and techniques, such as recycled materials or reclaimed wood, which may not be permitted under standard building codes. This flexibility encourages environmentally friendly building practices and affordability. It also allows for unique problem-solving, for imaginative solutions to construction challenges in rural and remote areas. By embracing alternative materials and design methods, owners can overcome obstacles related to accessibility, terrain, and resource availability. Along with flexibility, it prioritizes the essential safety requirements, and these inspections ensure that structures meet baseline standards. So as you can see by the photo there, that is something that generally is not permitted under standard building practices but could be permitted under a Title twenty-five. So looking at the presentation here on the Board, these are viable homes that would be allowed under Title twenty-five. On the bottom right is the container homes. Many of us are familiar with this type of structure. Typical sizes of these are twenty by eight feet or forty by eight feet. On the top right is a Kwanzaa hut. It's made out of galvanized steel. The Willow Restaurant here on Highway forty-nine is an example of this. This was used by the military during World War II for soldiers as an easy-to-build shelter, and they have been used as agriculture and industrial buildings over the years. On the top left is the metal designs. This could be more cost-effective and contemporary. These dwellings are usually more weatherproof and fire-resistant. And on the bottom left, you can leverage the unique qualities of each material with mixed materials with design flexibility. Common materials would be used would be stucco, stone, aluminum, steel, or cement board. These are photos of what is not viable under Title twenty-five. Motorized vehicles are not permitted as dwellings. The California Department of Housing and Community Development regulates RV parks, while the Department of Motor Vehicles has jurisdiction over campers, vans, and other motorized vehicles. The Building Department does not have the authority to permit those types of vehicles under Title twenty-five. Our jurisdiction applies to only building structures and other types of constructions, not to motorized vehicles. Exposed straw bales do not meet fire safety standards. However, straw-bale construction with a fire-resistant exterior shell, such as stucco or another approved material, can meet requirements under Title twenty-five on a case-by-case basis. Canvas yurts face similar challenges. Many yurts do not meet fire safety standards and may not satisfy snow load requirements. However, with engineered plans that address these concerns, a Title twenty-five permit may be granted on a case-by-case basis. Unpermitted dwellings and code cases. Title twenty-five has the potential to make significant impact on the unpermitted rural housing in Nevada County. As with any code case, the aim is to bring unpermitted dwellings into compliance. This ordinance would simplify and reduce the cost of compliance process, making it more accessible for many homeowners. Homeowners with unpermitted structures often face legal and financial hurdles when attempting to bring their buildings up to code. This would provide a structured, attainable path to compliance without requiring a complete rebuild to meet standard code specifications, reducing both complexity and cost. Traditional building codes can be financially prohibitive from homeowners with unpermitted structures. Depending on the structure, this would allow homeowners to focus on meeting essential life, health, and safety standards rather than undertaking expensive, full-scale modifications. This would minimize financial strain while achieving compliance. It is important to note, unpermitted structures would need to meet all setbacks, density requirements, and other requirements as a new build under Planning Department guidelines. An unpermitted structure would also need to meet environmental health requirements concerning septic systems, wells, and similar considerations. Further, unpermitted structures would also be required to have a deed recorded for real estate purposes. Overall, this could serve as a valuable tool for legitimizing unpermitted rural homes in ways that traditional building codes may not allow. Currently, the cost to build a new residence in western Nevada County averages about four hundred dollars per square foot, while in the eastern Nevada County, it rises to over eight hundred dollars a square foot. Although no formal studies are available, the proposed ordinance aims to reduce these costs by twenty-five percent for new construction. Significant savings could come from using repurposed materials, alternative construction methods, and lower inspection fees as discussed throughout this presentation. Today, constructing a new one-thousand-square-foot home at four hundred dollars per square foot amounts to four hundred thousand dollars. If Title twenty-five were passed, it would reduce these costs by a quarter, and that could drop the price to three hundred thousand dollars, still a substantial but more accessible investment for many. However, financing would still be necessary, and this arrangement would remain a private agreement between the homeowner and the lender. This ordinance does not cover financing as it falls outside the Building Department's authority. Similarly, securing homeowner fire insurance has become a significant challenge in Nevada County. This matter, too, remains a contractual issue between the homeowner and the insurance provider and is beyond the scope of this ordinance. Today, we are recommending adopting this ordinance for an initial three-year period as a pilot program to assess community interest and engagement. This trial phase will allow us to monitor the program's use for both new construction and after-the-fact permitting. We are optimistic and excited about this potential, as this initiative will offer many in the community an additional pathway to homeownership, enabling many residents to experience the quality of life Nevada County offers through permanent housing. If adopted, we plan to return to the Board in late 2027 with recommendations on whether to extend, modify, or conclude the program. We'd be pleased to address any questions at this time.
Thank you. I have the benefit of sitting on the ad hoc, so I very much of what you described, I'm familiar with, but I was going to start off. Supervisor Swarth, that was also on the ad hoc, and just turn it over to you for questions.
I actually don't have any questions. I think you did a really thorough job of covering all the points that we have discussed and even more in-depth than what we had discussed at our meetings. I will be curious after, maybe have some questions after listening to public comment. Thank you.
Anybody have questions prior to public comment, or would we like to go to public comment? Do you have questions, Supervisor Hall?
Thank you. I think my only question right now is, and I probably know the answer, is that while Title twenty-five seems to obviously allow some flexibility to bring down the cost of housing and make it easier for people to build, and it has minimum requirements... Title twenty-five prescriptive to the county, in other words, the flexibilities that they outline that are possible, is that all there is, or is there any possibility that we could take Title twenty-five and add some other flexibilities to make it even easier? Is that, or is it just totally prescriptive, like it's either twenty-five or it's twenty-four?
No, you could, there's some, we have some leeway around the margins to make things easier. Do you have an example that you may want to put forward that we can discuss?
I don't, just wondering, yeah, if there were, yeah, I guess I'd be curious how substantial those, that flexibility would be.
It would be, we would get with the fire community, for example, and see if they would want us to reduce some fire standards. I don't know if they would be on board with that, but we have some flexibility around those lines. Again, with the energy community, we have some flexibility on what would require for... We've done some, we did a little bit of reduction on the energy side, but yeah, there's, around the margins, there's some...
Around the margins, no.
But nothing significant moving forward at this time.
Okay, thank you.
See, now they're, no, yeah, go ahead, Supervisor.
How much of it is actually dictated by the state, though, George?
Well, Title twenty-five is carved out in the state law, so there's eight additional counties right now who have this in the rural areas, so, and it's been met with moderate to low success at this point. There's just not been a lot of energy behind it, but we're hoping to change that, because if this is adopted, we will go... if this is adopted, we will go out and do community outreach, talk to different groups to, because there'd be a lot of people that won't be aware of this moving forward. And so to really, you know, take advantage of these pro-housing initiatives, we want to go out and let people in the county know that these are available to them, especially like I talked about to the people who are living in unpermitted structures now. This may help them get up to a permitted structure at this point.
So when you talk about flexibility, though, you can't, you still can't go beyond any minimum requirements of the state.
Well, like I talked about, you don't have to put a receptacle on every room.
Yes.
You know, you do, you know, you don't have to have the prescriptive state law, the state, the building code on size of bedrooms. You know, you don't have to keep 75 degrees in your, each bedroom, as long as you have a heat source in one main room, you can do that. So now, will people want to do that? That would be up to them, but they can reduce some of their scope down to that if they want. That leaves them some options.
Okay. Thanks, George.
So maybe I could just follow up. I think we're on the same lines. So when I do the math, from the last time we had Title 25, 55 final permits in 17 years, it's about three a year. So is there, are we doing anything, are we, in this presentation, are we suggesting anything more to like increase that number? Or like, I guess, public, more public outreach is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what type of public outreach, if any, was attempted back then.
Yeah, okay.
But as you know, the cost of a building is so much more today than it was even back in 2016 when that program ended. So I think there's a lot of renewed interest in this program.
Okay.
Yeah, so, because actually, where I'm just curious, so somebody has like converted their garage. This would give them opportunity to get, they would be able to come in and get through the process to make that legal.
Correct, but they would have to be in the zoned areas. This wouldn't be if you lived in, say, Alta Sierra had a one-acre lot. That's not zoned agricultural, forest, or timberland, so that would, you would still have to meet standard building codes for those people. This is just for those in the zoned areas.
Okay. Yeah. Agriculture, yeah, I see that.
Okay, I think we've had some questions, and we'd like to just open up to public comment. And if you have a public comment here, feel free, Tom, to jump up there, and we'll get started.
Good afternoon. This is Tom Durkin, Creative Director of the Sierra Ridge Still Place to Go Project, District Four. Before I start, I want to congratulate Mr. Schofield on a wonderful career, and I want to thank you personally for all the support you've given us, and I will get those videos edited. A little late. I'm very impressed with this Title 25. I wasn't prepared to be, but I am. I think you've done an excellent job of trying to accommodate low-income people as much as possible. I do have some comments, though. I don't understand why you want to have a three-year sunset clause. You've done this before, it's been proved in eight other counties. I don't believe a three-year time limit is enough for it to really roll out. So I would suggest five to seven, or just not even have a sunset on it, because it's been something that's been established, and it's not like we're porching new ground here. It's something that's been researched quite well. Very glad to hear that the water and water can be deferred for a well. At the October 24th Planning Commission, Ms. Iranee from the Environment Health said that she would be able, if the state allows her, to permit people to have a temporary tank to, their septic, to defray the eventual cost of building a septic system. And I see they've got to have a septic system, but give people, so they have less of it up front cost, because this is not high-end developments here. It's people just living on the edge. And it says that it's a small tool. It is, small, and it's a good tool. I like it, but it can't stay in the box. The regulations and the fees and the setbacks and all that are so restrictive. It's just something that looks good on paper that doesn't pencil out on the ground. It's a waste of taxpayers' money to be even doing this. So I would like to agree with Supervisor Hall that if we can find any way to make this more accessible to people without violating health and safety standards of life and limb. So that's, I want to say thank you for your work. Very impressed with the work, and I hope we can just make it as accessible as possible for all the people in the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tom.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Brad P. Seimer. Many of you know of the work that I get to go out and do in Nevada County. My initial thoughts on this are a three-year sunset clause is a little bit dangerous, especially when you consider that if you had a brand-new, regularly-built structure, you went into the county, you went through all your design work, you bought the piece of property, you're already looking at three, three-year timeframe until you get that house done. I would ask that you at least push it to five and possibly seven years. It makes more sense for that, because we have people that are, you know, going to have to go through that same process, but they are also lower income. So, you know, I know for myself, it took four years for me to get my house built, and I have one of those alternative houses. My house looks like an upside-down concrete swimming pool. Basically, though, the reason I built that structure was it'll be here in 5,000 years. Okay? I don't have to worry about fires from the outside. It's a completely buried structure that sticks out of a hillside. My energy costs on it are, I filled my propane tank four years ago. I just filled it again last month, and that's a 250-gallon propane tank. You know, I have a full solar array, I'm still grid-connected, but we are pretty much self-sufficient. When we had the Snowmageddon in Alta Sierra, that Supervisor Schofield, I imagine, remembers quite readily. We had people parking in our driveway in order to use, to bring their cell phones up to our house to charge them, because we were the only one in a two-mile radius that had power. Needless to say, though, we are not a perfect example for this. We are dealing with a lot of people whose homes I go out and fix. I walk up their staircase, it's 30 inches wide. It doesn't meet current building standards. There are things, you know, small things like that. These are structures, many of them, that were built in the early 1900s. They may not have had been permitted. Now they're coming into a frame, timeframe where they are. So, you know, the other things I would like to try to figure out is creative ways on how we can pay the fees, building fees. Is there a way that the county could defer off those fees and collect on an annual basis on those fees? You know, you're going to be getting a great return in the property tax revenue that will offset those fees. So anyway, I'm running out of time. I'll drop my comments there. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Brad.
Sandra Safran. I have no dog in this fight.
You have to pull that mic right up in front of your mouth there.
I commend the working department for the work that they have done, but we have a housing crisis, and it doesn't really address it. And they have sort of, they don't address what the working poor can afford. The working poor can afford a RV or a trailer. There has to be some way to address that so that we can accommodate people who don't have any housing. The housing that we're addressing here is for people who have money but not enough money. I think we have to take into consideration the people who don't have money. They're working and for day-to-day, hand-to-mouth. I think those considerations have to be put forward. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Do we have any callers on the line?
Chair, we do have one caller.
Okay, let's take them. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Simona, and I'm calling from Penn Valley. My husband and I live in a property that's zoned residential-agricultural five, and we attended one of the public outreach meetings in November that George and Nicholas facilitated, and we really appreciated the presentation and the opportunity to ask questions. So I wanted to thank, give a shout out and thank them for that. We wanted to also offer a personal example in support of Title 25. I realize that it's not a cash hall and won't solve the housing shortage crisis, but if Title 25 were approved, we would be able to transform our walk-in basement into a junior ADU space where my mom could move in when she needs care. She's getting close, really close to that point, so she would be close to us but still have her own space. The single, biggest barrier for us, of course, to be able to convert our basement is the cost, and we estimate comparing Title 25 to Title 24, that we could save probably about $5,000 to $7,000 if we were doing it in compliance with Title 25. So for us, this is a significant amount of money, because we would save some costs in the permitting, but also in the design and the building features that we could do ourselves. That means that we would be able to start our project probably at least one year earlier, since we wouldn't have to take out additional debt to start that. Thank you.
Yeah, good comments. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Eric of Eric Brewer Designs and Interiors. I'm a local building designer here in the county. I have assisted dozens and dozens of people throughout the years, my 10 years in this county, with permit issues. I love the fact that we're addressing those issues. It's a lovely thing to see. Half of Nevada County seems to be built without permits or legal somewhat conforming. However, some of these issues that I have seen over the many years are people live in absolute fear that somehow there is going to be someone calling on them, knocking at their gate, inspecting, and them having to spend tens of thousands of dollars on trying to get their properties to conform to current building codes. And every year, it simply gets a little more difficult. Some of these people that I have represented are widows who have no other source of income other than, say, an undisclosed ADU. Some of these have been people who needed simply a RV parked on their house so that they could have a caretaker. Some of these are people who have been, that they feel subjected to persecution by the county or the enforcement area, and it was found that the building was actually legal non-conforming, built in 1955, basically a fire, a forest department cabin, and having to spend, you know, $30,000, $40,000 defending himself. These are the things that I respect, that we are trying to at least mediate for the many people in this county. But it does leave me with a sad feeling that these weren't addressed earlier, that we've only had 25 permits in 2016. It seems that it would be reasonable for the maybe 40 to 50 people that I've assisted over the past 10 years would have been those permits. So I welcome that this is moving forward. I hope that this does not create undocumented consequences that we are not aware of, but I do believe that the county has the right to be able to inspect properties for public safety. In my area, only about yesterday or two days ago, there was an armed robbery of a permitted cannabis, and yet that...
Thank you, Eric. Madam, clerk, are there any other callers out there?
I will check on the callers.
Okay. Anybody else here in the board chamber like to make a comment? Thanks. Okay.
Let's see if there are more callers now. No additional callers.
No. Okay, we'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to the board for discussion. And I'll turn it over to you, Supervisor Swarthout.
So, thank you. Thanks for the presentation and the comments from the public. I think we're fully aware at the county that we have a housing crisis, not just in our county, but all across the state of California. And I think that any tool that we can provide that is going to give people an opportunity to be in legally permitted housing is a good one. I think that there is an opportunity maybe to go a little bit further here to see if there's some other ways that, there can be some cost savings for people when they go, in particular, not necessarily in brand-new building, but I think that the big issue I saw when we started doing the work on this was how many unpermitted structures there are in Nevada County and how cost prohibitive it is for people to, to try and bring those up. And not just cost prohibitive, but people feel that there's a lot of bureaucracy, whether that's, you know, true or not. We navigate bureaucracy all day long, but it's, it's different when you remember the public and you look at the process and you see it's daunting, and so you just decide not to do it. So I think that the public outreach here is going to be really important, and I think that the ability for our planning and building staff to work with people and explain it to them in the simplest of terms to see if we can easily, you know, make it easier for them to come in. So I, I support this 100%. We'll continue to be looking for other opportunities. I think one of the issues that we discussed was the fees. Most of those fees don't, you know, the building permit fees come to the county, but the, the school fees and the transportation fees and the park and recreation fee, well, the park and recreation fees go to whichever entity that the building resides in. But it'd be great if we could look for ways for maybe payment plans for people so they don't have to pay that all upfront, because that, that truly is cost prohibitive. Just building, just the fee component can add about $50,000 to the construction of a new home. So I think that's an area where we need to continue to work on, but, you know, I support this. The sunset, when I look at a sunset, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the appropriate word here. I think we're looking at a three-year pilot program to see how it works out, and if it's continue, if it's working well, then it will continue. But it puts us in a position of having to make sure that we review it and see if it's working, because I don't want to start a program and not have anybody come in and use it, and, you know, we just kind of let it go by the wayside. We need to do more investigation if people aren't using it and come up with better solutions. So maybe we say three-year pilot program, I don't know. I can't remember the reasoning why we did the three-year sunset. Maybe, George, you can explain that.
We just wanted to get, engage interest. Like I said, you know, from 99 to 16, we had 55 people go through and complete their projects, so three a year, three or four years, not a whole lot. So maybe we can make it, maybe we could relax some standards or some regulations to make it more, you know, like you're talking about, more feasible for some. And just so you know, Supervisor, we did develop a program earlier this year on deferred payments on a, on a monthly plan rather than an upfront cost. So, but we did not give the owner of that structure a occupancy until everything was paid. But we did defer a lot of those mitigation and school fees while the project was going along over, I think it was a six- or seven-month period. That way, they didn't have to pay all their costs the day they got their building permit.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I have one more clarification. It looked like the Title 25 structures cannot be rented out.
Yeah, I didn't go into that as deep as like I probably should have. We're talking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that, is that a two-year period after? Yeah, so you, once you, but this is a pro-housing initiative, so we didn't think that it would be proper for the developer to come in and build some of these and rent them right away. be proper for the developer to come in and build some of these and rent them right away. So we want homeowners to have their own permanent structure, their own permanent housing. So once you live in it for two years and get the benefit out of that, we will then allow renters or employees housing in those structures. That's what we're proposing and recommending today.
So it wouldn't be able to be, function like an ADU for someone for a second income?
Not right away. Generally, this is for, like we talked about earlier, some people were considered, you know, their in-laws or their mothers, their elderly care for those type of things, or some children coming back from school. But again, this is what we're recommending. If you wish to go in another direction, we would be attuned to that.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would want to open that up as well as, I mean, you look at, like, if it's workforce housing for ag, then you're not going to live in it. You need to have it for workers. So I guess my, you know, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty that's, my overall concern is that we aren't being flexible enough. So I support this program. I know we're going to see the tiny homes on wheels coming back to us, and I understand that these are tools in our toolbox to try to get more housing built and make it a little bit easier for people. And the principle, I agree with 100%. I agree with one of our commenters. We are actually in a full-blown housing crisis that has not gotten easier despite all the low-income housing we have been able to build. We've done a good job in this county, but it has not eased our housing crisis at all. And as Tom has mentioned, we still have people living on the edge. We have people living in RVs. So I am much, and I'll mention this again in the next one, and I'll mention this in our January. I am very interested in us exploring much more flexible housing options, including RVs, and having deeper conversations about getting a whole bunch more housing of all kinds available on the market for renters, the whole gamut for people who are on the edge, finding a way to get more housing in here. I know we're inching towards that with these, with this, the Title 25 and also tiny homes on wheels, which we'll talk about another meeting, but I feel like that is, it's too slow of an inching. And so I think about the amount of staff time that has gone into this and the other ordinance. And if we're going to spend a year or a half a year on an ordinance, it needs to generate more than three to five houses per year. It just needs to. To my mind, that's not the best use of our resources. So I'd love for us to explore going much bigger and broader. Obviously, that's something that has to come to the board, and you have to have a majority of people move and want to move in that direction. But I'm just putting that out there at this point, that I appreciate everything we're doing. I'm feeling the urgency. Everything I hear when I go to my national meetings and state meetings, no one else has been able to fix this issue. We've got to get bigger and bolder if we're going to really address it. So I'm going to support these initiatives as long as I, you know, I'm going to support all of these initiatives, but the more flexible we can be and the better, the more supportive I feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need some clarification.
Supervisor Hook?
Yeah, I just need a little more clarification, because you just, what you said just makes sense. So we have folks who want to come in and get their permits legalized, right? They could have already been renting this little place for years to somebody, and now they want to make it legal. They're obviously not going to move into their little apartment. Where does that fit into this criteria?
Yeah, like I said, right now, we're recommending that these be, like I said, this is a pro-housing initiative from the board, and so that's what we're looking at it as, rather than, you know, we're all for builders and commercialization and capitalism, but this, we looked at it as more of a pro-housing, trying to get people into their own homes, get them permitted. So if the board gives direction where you want these rentals to be allowed right away, we would not have any issues with those.
Yeah, and then I would like to point out, so it's kind of interesting, in my district, most everything is residential ag. A lot of areas are, that septic's even available, actually. So that would be, that would be acceptable. So if you actually live in a rural area that has water and septic, this would, this would also be...
This would be one of the tools or give you an option. Again, you don't have to accept it, but this is an option for people in the rural areas.
Okay, and then I'm back to what Heidi was just talking again, a little bit about agriculture, so I'm looking at that. So I got a farmer, he has a barn, he'd like to convert that. The way it's written now, he couldn't put a farm labor in there, he would have to live in it himself.
Yeah, for two years, but again, we're open to suggestions from the board to...
So I just like with, for me, I'm looking at where that flexibility needs to happen, because, I mean, that would be the idea. I get it if it's family, if your mom's moved home or your kids, they fit in the family criteria. But if I have a farm labor worker, I want to build an apartment, so I just, I think we need a little bit of flexible there, too. Just an agreement.
Do these have to be owner-built?
Owner-built or the owner's designee. So the owner could hire a contractor. And just to be clear, so say your contractor already had plans from 1999, that wouldn't meet today's code, but it would be Title 25 code. So you could get a really nice house that had the plans that were approved in 1999 and bring them, or even 2015, you know, that doesn't, you know, every three years, the California Building Code is upgraded. So, yeah, there's a lot of good things about this, you know, and when people think that this is just going to be available for some of the people who are around the margins, this would be a very good tool for people like the caller who said that she's going to save between $5,000 and $7,000. So if you, like I said, our goal is to, on new construction, to reduce costs by 25%. And if that's the case, that'll allow some people, a lot of people, to have accessibility to the building market now, we hope.
Yeah, the, yeah, thank you for that, George. Lost my train of thought here. I agree with, first of all, that's a tool, is what it is, but I think everybody agrees that there's so much more that is needed. And at the same time, we need much more flexibility, something more dramatic. But I can tell you also, when you look at a place like Altisira, for instance, they don't like the tiny homes project that's coming, you know? They don't want a little tiny home built on one of their lots, you know? So that's going to be a challenge also, the type of thing that Tom's looking for is going to be a major challenge. But we do have to find, we do have to go outside the box. ADUs by themselves are pretty dramatic, when you can now put an ADU in Lake of the Pines, for instance. A couple people mentioned that the sunset, and I kind of agree with it, why set a sunset at three years? Why even set a sunset? You had the other one, Title 24 with 17 years, it didn't work, and then 17 years later, you dropped it, so, but here you are again, so, you know, you haven't accomplished much.
Yeah, I would just recommend if you do not want some type of a pilot program of three years or five years, that we do come back to the board every so often and then put that in this ordinance. That way, the board can make some adjustments as needed. That was mainly, the main focus on the building department was to bring it back before the board. That way, we could report back and say, this is working, or this is not working, or here's where we'd like to modify it.
Yeah, and state codes are updated every three years, correct?
This would not, the three, yeah. I mean, not, that wasn't the reasoning.
Well, I know, it has nothing to do with it, but the state code gets, and I go like this, because it gets worse every time they look at it.
It gets, it gets more regulatory every three years.
Now, I only had one thing that really caught my ear, George. You said that this was a privilege, not a right. Tell me what that means.
Well, just because you have a shed that you bought at a big box store doesn't mean that we're going to allow that. You still have, you know, you still have to meet health and safety codes, fire requirements, it's just, you know, so the building department will be the arbiter of life, health, and safety on these type of structures. That's what we're really concerned about. We want, you know, we want people to become permitted, whether that's a Title 24 or Title 25, but we just can't permit everything and anything out there.
Right, so they still have to make specific codes. I wouldn't use the word privilege versus right. I don't, I think that's not a good term.
Okay.
But overall, I think the program is a tool, good tool. Thank you, George.
I just wanted to be clear to add on, yeah, I would, I would be in favor of allowing renting right away. I would also be in favor of no sunset, or if you feel the need for one, 15 years or 10 years, depending on your needs for, you know, what that means for you, for staffing. But to ask you to come back every year and report out on how it's going and do we need to make any changes, I don't see the need for having a sunset if that's the whole reason for it, but if there's another reason that you need a sunset, please, you know, help us understand that.
No, it was mainly for reporting, is you come back to the board and say, here's what's working, we think we should leave it alone, or it's not working, we might need to modify the ordinance. But we could report back every year, every other year, or whatever you determine is sufficient for that reporting.
So we could just give you direction on when to come back and then ignore the sunset, not have a sunset?
Right, we could modify the proposed ordinance.
So it doesn't need to go in the ordinance, and actually another tool that you would have available would just be a board order and then asking staff to come back with a report annually?
Okay, yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
I am too, because look how many we probably might have done, or we've turned away between when they turned it off in 2019 to now, we could have actually, if we even do one a year, we're accomplishing something. I mean, I think we'll do more, but I'm just saying, this is, I'm agreement.
Good, yeah, good, great discussion. As a member of the ad hoc, I think what we try to strike, there's a continuum of, you know, let's make it really easy, and then we need to be required to maintain some understanding of health and safety. So there's some balance there, and I think staff really work to try and get in that sweet spot, not to say that we can't make it less restrictive. But I think if I hear you correctly, and maybe it's not explicit but more implied, what you're describing is a culture of cooperation with the builder, right? So you're going to look at something and go, yes, this is safe, yes, this works, let's help you get to yes, and let's get this thing on.
Yes, we're, like I said, this, we're going to treat this as a pro-housing initiative rather than a regulatory issue. So if there's any way we can get to yes and feel comfortable about it. Now, like I said, you know, we have cracks in the ceiling, we have cracks in the foundation and other things like that. We cannot sign off on those type of things until they're fixed. But we will definitely, like the gentleman said earlier, if you have a 30-inch stairwell rather than a 36-inch stairwell, we'll have some leeway on that, because we don't want, it's cost prohibitive to have you tear out your stairs and find six more inches there, right? So we will use some commonsensical things, but, you know, when it's very obvious that this does not meet life, health, or safety standards, we will definitely have to, you know, bring that up to code at some point.
What comes to mind, the piece about the free ADU plan sets that we had for a while, or small, I'm sorry, small dwelling unit, small...
Affordable housing, ADU, affordable housing master plans?
Yeah, the master plans. For me, it's really a lot about the way you promote it, market it, inform the community, and do the outreach. So, I mean, if you can creatively design something to let people know that we're willing to play ball in this space, and there's this new piece coming up for you, and you can get out there, I think that would be helpful for me, just as one board member, seeing some energy go into that, because I know it's hard to reach people, and particularly on this, it's going to be hard to articulate some of the nuance of this versus building a regular house. So that's what would be my request, and I would support as well the coming back once a year and talking to us about it and not having a sunset. Go ahead, yeah.
That made me think of something, too, George, with the, I think back, number of years ago, we had quite a few unpermitted structures that we came in and we needed to get those permitted. And one thing that we did was we looked to say, this house was built in 19, who knows what, let's say, 1980. What were the fees at that time? And that's what they were charged, were those fees that went way back then, just to get them permitted. So that was one, one concept. The other concept would be, what was the code at that time? Was 30-inch stairways a code? If it wasn't, then maybe they need to, maybe they need to work on that. But if it was, then you could say that we have that flexibility.
Yeah, we currently do that, so if you can demonstrate what year your structure was built, 1999, 1980, or 1920, I mean, 2025, four, those are the codes we go by. But I don't know that I have the authority with the building department to make the adjustment on the fees at this time.
Yeah, that may have been something that was pretty unique, too, a couple...
But I can talk to my, to my fiscal team and see if that that's something we can address moving forward.
I think the ad hoc, yeah, the ad hoc talked a lot about all types of fee. It's in the cadre of pieces I hope we can talk about in January, different types of fee waivers and mitigation of some of the costs associated with that. So more to, more to come on that. And I just want to mention, just really quick, the housing crisis is obviously something every jurisdiction is engaged on, and when you look at $800 a square, just wrap your mind around that, like a three-bedroom, two-bath starter home is $1.1, $1.2 million in East County. There's not a lot any jurisdiction's going to be able to do to overcome that economic barrier. It's just, just a reality. I mean, it's just where it is right now, and so that's really tough on everybody. So I just wanted to say that everybody's engaged on it, towns, cities, counties, but it's really, really tough when you look at it. So, I mean, I'm betting on things like this and others, and we have another tiny homes on wheels ordinance, and then obviously another discussion related to RVs, and I call it van life in my neighborhood, but I'm living in an RV, some more to come on the ad hoc side. Anybody have additional? Go ahead, Supervisor.
I support the modifications that we're talking about here that have been presented. So if we want to add those into a motion.
Yeah, that'd be my question, are we going to add that to what the conversation, being able to rent them right away? I mean, especially if it's not new construction, I guess that's the other part of it, or even if it's new construction for ag labor, or I just, how do we word that? I just think that would be important, because it's kind of moot if you got to live two year, that we won't have people doing it, right? And then the other thing I love is, every now and then you get one of these that's a code compliance from, they did something way back when. We want them to have the ability to come in and get permitted, and then if they can actually rent that little building legally, that would be fantastic.
I'm not opposed to renting them, I just, it's a little scary for me to think of somebody building them and speculating on them.
That's what I think is the...
That troubles me a little bit.
I agree.
So I don't know how to overcome that, but I would argue that if we need houses and somebody has a house to rent and the market's dictating how much that will be charged on that rent, that that's better than nothing, right? So having a rental unit that is...
At least available.
At least available at fair market value is probably better than nothing.
So let's make that clear, Paul, and I like what you just said, it kind of interests me, though, somebody that's going to speculate on it. I mean, you have to be the owner builder on your property. You couldn't go build these on numerous properties, correct? Well, of course, if you own five houses, I guess you could.
Well, if anybody has enough money, you can just build it.
I know, I guess, so that's the other, I hear you're downside, but still going to build housing.
Yeah, I think that that potentially is going to work best for people who are coming in, already have an existing structure, that they're coming in under Title 25 to have it permitted. And then, you know, it's not a speculation issue, then I have no problem with that being rented. But I agree, I don't want to see people going out there, building substandard construction for rental units.
Yeah, that's why, I don't think, I don't think we're calling this substandard, though. If they're building this, it's not substandard. Just, I was just at the, at the, the medical clinic when I went yesterday, and I asked how they were doing with doctors that they were bringing in and nurses finding housing. She said, oh, the biggest issue is lack of rentals, because people who are renting out houses are adding on the cost of the fire insurance, because they're having to cover that. So to me, this whole idea that they're speculating, we need rentals. We've been hearing that for years, and now we're hearing it from professionals. If somebody is building it to rent, to supplement their income so they can stay in their home, that's okay, too, right? I think, I don't think we're, I think we're potentially creating a problem that may not exist. We're just so desperate for homes that we should allow these to be built and rented. And, you know, that's, that's, I guess, where I am, until I hear that there is really a way to speculate with them.
I would agree with you, and I think if you're going to, I mean, it would be up to your department and your team to identify if you thought that that was occurring. I mean, I guess once we, once we pass the ordinance, there is no recourse after that, right? Because if somebody bought a series of lots or subdivided something and put five of these on it, their rentals at that point, and to your point, they're out in the marketplace and people can rent them. So I guess we should be prepared for that if that's the case. I don't know.
So, but will that allow a contractor?
No, because the zoning for these properties doesn't allow you to buy a piece of property and put five houses on it.
No, but you could buy properties, plural, and build...
But I think that, from... But I think that from a practical perspective, because you're talking about rez ag, which is what's the minimum, what's the minimum?
Generally four, I mean, generally five acres. There's some outliers that are three and a half to four acres. But most of these properties would be five acre lots and, and larger.
Yeah.
It's a may not even be a problem we're talking about.
But I agree with Heidi. I think potentially we're creating a problem that doesn't exist, or we're addressing a problem that doesn't exist. So if we say that they could be rented out and just leave it at that, I'm, I, I support that.
I mean, that's where, when we, they come back a year later and we get to hear, how is it working? Then if we see that that's not being, that's being misused, we could add, change that.
I guess what I'm looking at though, I'm just going to throw out there, I don't want to see a bunch of people coming in and wanting to subdivide five or 10-acre parcels so they can build a new house at Title 25 and rent it out. I don't want to see a bunch more partialization going on that doesn't protect agriculture. So I would have a little bit of hard time with that.
That's a good perspective that you bring up.
I mean, I would like to see if somebody owns a home and they want to add their apartment to it to rent. I get that. But I don't want to see a bunch more partialization going on. I think that's what we're looking for here. That's not the lifestyle.
Would it go to the zoning administrator for the subdivision, a five acre though, right? And they would be able to ask that question?
I'm going to ask Tyler to step up here for a moment in planning. He probably answered that a little better than I could.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Tyler Barrington, principal planner for the record. Typically, when someone subdivides to the zoning administrator, we don't ask them what type of units they're going to build.
They don't ask what kind of buildings they're going to build? I mean, and that's people's right to subdivide.
Correct.
But we could bring it back in a year. Like, we could ask those questions in a year, and then we could find out. And if there were, then we could, we could pivot.
Sure. Absolutely.
As long as they're owner builders.
We can ask.
I think they have to be. Owner builder is a requirement of this one, right? I believe. Yeah. So, so it would be.
Or owner's designee with a contractor. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I can see that getting out of hand.
So I'll try to make, make the, are you, okay, she went up to, is, are we adopting or approving, adopting? Okay, adopt the ordinance with?
Supervisor Hall, if I could, there's a couple of things I want to make sure that are corrected. This is what we need to do today. This should have been a two reading. So we're going to correct that so that we get that in place. And so today, you're going to be basically introducing and waiving the first reading. So I need that language there. We will remove section three at this board's direction. The other thing in the, and so section four will become section three. And in that section, it will now read, this ordinance shall take effect and be in force at the expiration of 30 days from, from and after its passage, and it shall become operative on the 13th day of February 2025. That's presuming our second reading will be on January 14th. And, and, and the rest of the language would remain. So what I would ask is.
But we're making changes to this also. So how would we do that?
Right. And so then, so those, then you have to put your other changes in there. And I would make sure that we know whatever other changes, say, you've made. The only thing I heard for sure was the removing of section three, which was the.
And allowing to be rented.
Yeah. And then allowing the rental. Section, I'm sorry, just to finish, section three was the piece about it coming back and sunsetting in three years.
Right, right. So, so I'm making a motion to introduce, waive further reading and adopt this ordinance amended so that we are eliminating Title Three and taking away the sunset. And we are also eliminating the requirement that it cannot be rented for two years and allowing it to be rented as soon as it's built. Does that capture everything we need to say?
That, that's correct. You're not adopting, but you're doing your introducing of first reading. So that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion?
Yes, I'll second that.
Motion and second. Madam clerk, please call the rule.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
And, and that's with the direction to come back, board direction also, right, to come back and.
In a year.
In a year.
Within a year.
We'll go ahead and start our board order to report back to the board underneath the housing policy objective or as needed.
Thank you for all your work on this.
And I'm going to turn.
Thanks to the housing, sub-hawked, the hawk.
Ad hoc.
Ad hoc.
And I don't think we're, we're not done yet either.
No.
Yeah, there's more. And I, I'm really honored to be a part of that. We've done, it's been a really, a lot of learning and a lot of good insight and a lot of support by Tyler and his group as well. I just want to thank everybody for the meeting. I hope you have a happy holiday. Thanks to our staff and all the people that work so hard to make these meetings come true for us. It's been an absolute pleasure to be your chair. We have a little bit more for that next year. But I turn the gavel over to Supervisor Schofield to adjourn us. And this is his final meeting adjournment here. So I'd like to turn that over to him.